All right. I'm going to call the order, the regular meeting for the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners for February 16th, 2021. This is our midweek meeting. Thank you, everybody, for joining us either here in person or via Zoom. With that, I will ask our Executive Director of Libraries, Mr. Jeff Scott, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. I appreciate that. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call?
Of course. Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Von Hartung, Vice Chair.
Here.
Alexis Hill.
Here.
Katie Jung on the phone. Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
Deputy District Attorney Nate Edwards via Zoom.
Present.
And I'm Jan Galasini, your County Clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I appreciate that. All right. Mr. Manager, we are on to item three, sir.
Item three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, will you please call public comment?
In chambers, we have Ms. Carol Burns, followed by Ms. Melanie Sutton.
Good morning. My name is Carol Burns. I'm a resident of Sun Valley. I came across my master plan this weekend, and I wanted to point out a few things. Can't ask any questions, but I'd like to point out a few things. This is the master plan dated December 24th of 2018. Item 2.12 is the weed abatement among Sun Valley roadways with open ditches that shall occur annually. For some reason, we're having a difficulty getting our ditches cleaned in Sun Valley. Last year, I spoke to a group of men that were working on Carroll Drive. Evidently, they were hired by the county, and they were working and cleaning Carroll Drive, which is beautiful now. But we have many more ditches that are not clean and litter that is piling up on the ditches. The creek that goes through Sun Valley is full of trash and branches, and I don't know how the water even runs through there. But I need to punt it out, and last year when I spoke to the gentleman, I believe that's in charge of it, he was just telling me, whoa, $92,000, and I don't know what that was on. But there is no snow right now, but there are plenty of weeds, and we would really appreciate some attention to Sun Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burns.
Next up, we have Ms. Melanie Sutton, followed by Mr. Nicholas St. John.
Good morning. So I just would like to quote somebody. Those who give up essential freedoms for a little safety deserve neither. That's from one of our founding fathers, Ben Franklin. I don't know if you guys remember these things. All it's doing is dividing all of us, okay? Dividing us. I don't know if you guys remember 9/11 and where you were when the towers were struck, because I do. This sweatshirt, 9/12, the day after 9/11, this entire country was united. And this here is dividing us. I don't know if you have either a God complex or if you're just a coward. But I have children that are growing up in this county, and you're keeping us closed down, and you are keeping us wearing these masks. Do you have children? And also, there's been something that's been bothering me. About three weeks ago, when Manager Brown started speaking, talking about the agenda or whatever, Mr. Lucy was having a side conversation. Rude. And it's been bothering me for the last three weeks. So I demand a hearing. I demand us to open up 100% without these, because it's not doing anything. Nothing. I'm just wearing a scarf, but I can get in with this. Just a scarf. So, demand a hearing.
Mr. Nicholas St. John, followed by Ms. Cindy Martinez.
Welcome, Mr. St. John.
Thank you. The last time I was here, I tried to get through the five protocols that have been now established to treat, successfully treat COVID-19 patients. One of the primary ones that I'd like to highlight again is from Dr. Brownstein from Detroit, Michigan, who has treated as of mid-September, I don't know what the latest numbers are, but as of mid-September, he had treated 116 patients successfully with COVID-19. Some of them were near miraculous results. His protocol is to get people on what's called a high-dose vitamin C IV, and he uses a food-grade hydrogen peroxide diluted to 0.3% in a nebulizer. He has stories of people and literally documented documentation on treating people. One guy had been sent home to die. They got ahold of his office. He put them on this vitamin C and hydrogen peroxide nebulizer protocol, and within 24 hours, he was recovering. These are not just inconsequential ways to treat COVID, but we would like to see about getting this board to help us get this information to the Health District to get these implemented. There have been way too many deaths when there are proven protocols. This one from Dr. Brown. He has, again, we've got proven treatments. He's published those documentation. And not only has he published it, but then, interestingly enough, the FDA came and made him take them down. I think whenever you have a major agency that is telling a doctor who is successfully treating patients not to publish their results, there is something wrong with that. We could bring the death rate in Washoe County down to virtually zero if we just get these proven, highly effective and documented protocols in widespread use. We are requesting your response to our submission of these five protocols to save lives here in Washoe County in the next agenda item. If you do not respond to this request, we will assume your answer is no, you're not in favor of trying to get these proven protocols and successful protocols implemented for the citizens of this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Cindy Martinez, followed by Mr. James Bentham.
Welcome, Ms. Martinez.
Good morning, Commissioners, Manager Brown, and staff. Today is Day 334 of Tyrant King Sisalax COVID lockdowns and Day 34 of the Biden regime. I had to scrap my original presentation to you this morning because of new information I received last night and this morning. I've dug down deep into the political contributions to each of your campaigns. In summary, I found the following trends. Commissioner Itz5O Somewhere Jung and Comrade Commissioner Hill have benefited from contributions from George Soros, whose money funnels through many conduits of the Democrat Party and its left-wing financial backers, and it is a complicated funneling scheme. Commissioners Hartung and Lucy appear to have benefited greatly from realtors, developers, and the big money movers in Washoe County and the Republican Party. Commissioner Herman's contributions are roughly 85% self-funded. No one owns her vote. I also just learned Commissioner Itz5O Somewhere Jung is a graduate of Emerge Nevada, a left-wing progressive organization committed to getting women elected to office. Now, I'm all about equality, but concentrating efforts on electing people by sex is discriminatory. Comrade Commissioner Hill wants all children in Washoe County vaccinated before schools are open. All children. That means unborn children are on the way for that, too, right? She also wants to give money to businesses to help them stay afloat instead of allowing them the freedom to open and manage their own businesses. Hello, everybody. George Soros is in Washoe County. Commissioner Herman, respectfully, ma'am, you need to get some steel in your spine and demand that you declare an economic emergency resolution. Be put on the agenda for discussion. If you aren't pressuring the other commissioners in emails, texts, and conversations, you are failing your constituents. And what I cannot figure out for the life of me is why you, Commissioner Hartung, are aligning yourself with Chair Bob Lucy, the coward of the county. Regardless of your business ties, I understand your philosophy aligns more closely with that of your constituents. You represent me. I demand you proof up on the data being used to oppress the citizens of Washoe County through these coronavirus restrictions. We demand an open hearing into the virus response. In closing, my job here is not to awaken the sheep. They are on their way to the shearing barn, believing their fleece will be used for sweaters to clothe their fellow citizens. No, my job here is to awaken the other lions. Wake up, Washoe County.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. James Bentham, and I have documents to distribute to the board and place on file.
Welcome, Mr. Bentham.
Good morning, for the record. James M. Bentham. When this virus hit, we were told that there could be up to 2 million deaths. And we are being told that there are no vaccines, no treatments. Nothing is more contagious than fear. I've asked for a paper to be handed out to everybody. COVID deaths in 2017, 2.8 million. 2018, 2.8 million. 2019, 2.8 million. 2020, 2.9 million. Nowhere near the additional deaths that would have been attributed to coronavirus. Also, I've asked to hand out a paper from Huber Personalized Medicine posted in COVID-19 Coronavirus Education: Hot Topics, January 31, 2021. According to this article, vaccines have to stimulate an immunity, antibodies within the person receiving it, but also have to disrupt transmission. According to this article, this is based on definitions from the CDC, FDA. Based on the information, the COVID shot is not a vaccine in the historical sense. This shot does not contain any viral components to trigger immune reaction creating antibodies. Instead, the mRNA is a signal to cause your cells to make a spike protein. This genetic material enters every cell of your body and does not leave. The mRNA causing your cell to make proteins. This technology is called antibody-dependent enhancement, or ADE. It drives genetic alteration. The mRNA does nothing to reduce the transmission. Have there been successful, long-term animal studies for antibody-dependent enhancement? That is an important question. So this shot does not qualify as a vaccine. This is a treatment. I am asking for a hearing to discuss treatments and the lockdown procedures we're under. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Cassidy Pocock.
Thank you.
Good morning, Ms. Pocock.
It's actually Mrs., but...
Hold on one second. We'll just get your timer right. Hold on one second. Here we go. Go ahead.
Yeah, it's actually Mrs., but that's all right. Good morning. Before I add on one of the proven procedures to the record, I'd like to just add a comment on what Mrs. Martinez said about Commissioner Hill's desire to have all children vaccinated before school. And I just thought, how ironic that a vaccination, which has been tested using cell lines developed from aborted babies, be forced upon our children. Anyway, one of the proven COVID treatments is a drug called ivermectin, a once-a-week medication to prevent malaria. And it's now been repurposed and been proven in a double-blind placebo study of about 1,200 healthcare workers in worst possible scenarios, treating COVID patients day in and day out. About 800 of the workers were given ivermectin as a prophylaxis for several weeks, and the other 400 a placebo. The results were undeniable. Of the 800, zero of them contracted COVID, while of the 458% contracted COVID-19. America's frontline doctors are promoting the use of ivermectin for treatments as well as for prevention. If you truly care about our elderly, who are the most vulnerable, you will help us get this prevention protocol into the nursing homes and assisted living centers. Dr. Randondo, who participated in the study, stated that the advantages of ivermectin are that it is a well-known and studied drug because it's been used for more than 30 years in humans and for around 45 years in animals, while around the world, trillions of doses are given per year with no side effects. He stressed that several studies reliably demonstrate the antiviral effect on the symptoms of patients that have been given ivermectin, and that in laboratory tests, a significantly rapid reduction in viral load is noted when it is used in the early phases. It would appear that Dr. Brownstein's treatments of the high dose for vitamin C, hydrogen peroxide nebulizer therapy, combined with ivermectin, could be the most efficient therapy available. We could bring our death rate in Washoe County to virtually zero if we would get these proven, highly effective, documented protocols into widespread use. We are requesting your response to our submission of these five protocols to save lives here in Washoe County in the next agenda item. If you do not respond to this request, we will assume that your answer is no and that you are not in favor of trying to get these proven, successful protocols implemented for the citizens of this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have a couple of emails to put on the record. One from Elise Wetherley and one from Republican Women's Clubs.
Okay. Thank you.
And then we have Ann Marie Grant on Zoom.
All right. Ms. Grant.
Ann Marie Grant, for the record, sister of Thomas Purdy, who was hard-tied by Reno police during a mental health crisis and then asphyxiated to death by Washoe County deputies up at the jail. I just want to applaud one of the speakers for calling some of you out on your inappropriate behavior while people are speaking. I witnessed at one time you actually laughing at people. It's disgusting, and it needs to stop. You are elected officials. I wanted to let you know that Washoe County Sheriff's Office presented yesterday to the legislature, and I did let them know of all the shortcomings of the county commissioners. I would suggest that the members of the public take their grievances to the legislature as well. So some of the things I let the legislature know was how you all were neglecting your duties under the NRS. When 12, 14-plus people died at the jail, three of them being asphyxiation deaths. I also let them know how we were treated when we flew in from Boston, and four of us, my 12-year-old nephew, myself, and my brother Dan, were up at the jail holding a banner for my brother and how we were surrounded by six Washoe County deputies and how one of them kept his hand on his gun the entire time. I guess peaceful people are a big threat to law enforcement in Washoe County. I also let them know that there's no investigation. I'd like to mention, you know, you claim you have no control over the sheriff's office, but you must have some type of working relationship with them. I do hope you pass these concerns on that I send you and email you, but you don't respond to any of your constituents' emails, so it's highly unlikely. So I guess I'll leave you. I don't know how much time I have left, but I'll leave you with my brother being killed at the jail.
Next up, we have Mr. Dan Purdy on Zoom.
All right. Mr. Purdy. Dan Purdy, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Are the fours yours?
Daniel Purdy, for the... Okay, thank you. Daniel Purdy, for the record, brother of Thomas Purdy murdered at Washoe County Jail. I also spoke to the legislator, like Ms. Grant did. They did have someone from Washoe County there presenting for the sheriff. This guy actually lied right to the legislator. He said more officers have been killed in 2020 than any other time. There were only two officer deaths in 2020, and that's because they both did us all a favor and put a gun in their mouths and pulled the trigger. But they want to make it look like that it was a citizen that went ahead and did that. That's a bunch of bull. You have other ones that are drinking in their cars, getting into accidents in their cars, and then getting a promotion. As some of your other speakers had said, you are beholden to your political donors. As I've told you in the past, that's all you care about. You don't care about your voters. All you care about is your next election. I strongly suggest that anyone that wants to remove a commissioner, duty to the duty, get out there and vote. Get out there and register people to vote. Let's get these people out of there. Get some new blood in there that can help us all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Purdy.
We do have one more speaker in chambers, Mr. Charles Stockford.
Mr. Stockford. Welcome, Mr. Stockford.
Good morning. My name is Charles Stockford. I'm here to represent the people from Quartz Lane again. It's been quite a few months since I've been here because of the virus going on. You've sent in a crew to clean up Quartz Lane. They did a real good job. But since then, the county code enforcement hasn't done a thing, and it's right back to what it was six months ago, when you cleaned it up. And I'm curious what you can do to get the county code enforcement to do something. The people up there have a motorhome on the street, and one of the trucks sideswiped it, sitting there, took all the siding off of it, and cars all over the place, engines pulled out of them, and they're all sitting on the street. So I thought maybe today I could come down here and refresh your minds that it's still a problem. And I would like to see somebody here do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comment?
I have nobody in chambers and nobody on Zoom.
All right. Seeing no further public comment, we'll close public comment. Bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager.
Item number four is Commissioners' County Managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions, updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Mr. Manager, do you have anything for this morning?
I have nothing today, Mr. Chair.
All right. All right. Commissioner Herman, I'll be signed in first.
I'll try and make it as fast as possible. I've got several items. Several times I have asked for us to engage in having a Second Amendment sanctuary in our county. And with the threat of what's going on in DC right now and the plans to start trying to take people's guns, I think it would be an appropriate time for us to think about putting that on the agenda resolution. There's quite a few other counties that have done it here in Nevada. So I'd like to request that that be put on the agenda soon. In regards to some of the public comments this morning, we had, you know, attempted to... Well, I'm just re-requesting an agenda item to ask for implementation of some of these protocols, because there are some ways to avoid having people getting seriously ill from... Especially with all of our testing and everything. If we can hit those early, I think we could probably save some lives. In fact, I'm sure of it. And in that same vein, I would like to request that, again, that we open up our county and let businesses take hold and recover by their hard work and try to regain what they've lost over the last nine or 10 months. And it's getting close to a year now.
Excuse me. Excuse me. This is a business meeting. If you guys want to clap, you can go out in the pavilion and watch the hearing. But Commissioner Herman has the floor. Thank you.
And then I have a question for whoever it is at the county that's responsible for this. Citizens have asked me, how come there's no completed KLOMAR on Prado North with them following through on their development and plans? So I'd like an answer to that. And then I wanted to let the citizens know in some of the communities, such as Lemon Valley and Bird Eye and others, of course, that have problems with people speeding on country roads and really tight residential areas with small, narrow roads. And so we've been talking about speed bumps, and I even talked to our county manager about that. And I'm willing to donate some discretionary funds for speed bumps as soon as I find out how much speed bumps cost. So I know it sounds like kind of a funny item, but signs and speed bumps, actually. So I think I was wondering why some of the emails that we get, we don't read them into the record. Like today, the Republican women had written an email. And I think some of those should be, or maybe all of them should be read into the... Because I don't see a copy of it anywhere here, so... That's just an idea. Just my suggestion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Any other speakers this morning? Vice Chair Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Manager, we've talked about having a forum at the Convention Center where we can get people from the state, Caleb Cage, Dr. Pandory, others, who can make decisions about treatments, Dr. Pandory specifically. I'm not a doctor. I'm not in a position to tell the hospitals how to treat patients. But certainly, we could open this forum up, let the Health District participate in it. It would be more a way for them to hear directly from the folks that want to get their voices heard. And I think that that's completely reasonable. I don't know where we are. This is, the sheriff is listening, with our work crews. Historically, we have cleaned ditches all over the county with our inmate work crews. And I know that there's been some curtailing of that, so perhaps we can contact the sheriff and find out what the timeline is for work crews to get back out and deal with some of the ditches. I know we have some of the same issues. I know we have some of the same issues in Spanish Springs. I will reiterate once again about speeding in Spanish Springs. It's everywhere. People have gone crazy about driving well beyond the speed limits on, on residential roads. And so I, I know I've been talking to staff and to, to RTC about getting some funding for the, the residential roads for speed bumps and, and other safety measures. So we'll, we'll continue to work on that. And that, Mr. Chairman, is all I have this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I, I want to remind everybody, this is a business meeting. I have opened these chambers because we are allowing individuals to come in here as long as people have adhered to the rules. Please wear your masks while you're in here. If you do not want to wear your mask, you're more than welcome to go outside and watch that from the atrium. But I will not have people in this auditorium without their masks on. Ms. Nediger, I'm looking directly at you. Do you understand me? Do you understand me? Do you understand me, Ms. Nediger? I'm, 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 thank you. This is my law, the law, this is the rules in this chambers. Thank you. All right. Commissioner Jung, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to ask that the manager get back to Ms. Burns and Mr. Stockford. I, and, and me, because I would like to know what is the policy with the ditches in Sun Valley with the weeds in them? I know that has changed several times. I'd like to know the official in writing, what, what that is and what the responsibilities are at the county and the citizens if applicable. And then I also need Mr. Manager Brown to take a look at Quartz Lane and come up with permanent solutions to a very ongoing problem for over 13 and a half years of my tenure. And he probably needs a good briefing on it, and I would also welcome him to go check it out. There are a lot of problems, Mr. Brown. You're going to hear from staff, but I'm really looking for a permanent solution. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Appreciate that. Commissioner Hill, do you have anything this morning?
All right. Seeing nothing from any of the other commissioners, I'll kind of wrap up. As many of you may have heard, last week, Governor Sisalak did put out a direct, a new directive changing the current occupation, I mean, occupancy levels within the public facilities based upon the current trend of our COVID responses in each county and statewide. He did move everybody from a 25% to either a 35 or 50% as of Monday, yesterday, February 15th. Then moving a remainder of everyone back to the 50% capacity on the 15th. And then 45 days later, transitioning all that, those authority in regards to the COVID response back to local authority. We are looking forward to that hopefully May 1st number, and hopefully we can get a response from him sooner in regards to our numbers as those continue in the right direction. May 1st is 75 days away, but we will continue to work with the state to try to mitigate and continue to open businesses back up here in the community. For the public comment that keeps pointing out the county should be back open, we are doing what we can to open the county back open as soon as we possibly can. Roughly, there are businesses that reside in the unincorporated county is right now at 7,000 or 6,000 total businesses. Out of those 6,000 businesses, though, however, only about 2,000 of those are actual storefronts or actual retail, uh, or retail locations. Most of those are home businesses or offices within their residence. So those are the business licenses that we have. Totally, though, however, within the city of Reno and City Sparks, there are an additional 35,000 businesses between the two entities. I understand this is challenging. I understand that you are upset. I understand that this is not what you want. However, once again, I continue to convey to you, no matter what this commission does, no matter what we say, if we wrote a resolution, if we told somebody differently to do different things, this is not going to change the outcome of the businesses. I cannot change the mask update, the, I cannot do it. I don't know why we, why I have to continue to repeat myself, but this is not something I have any challenge over. If you don't want to wear a mask, you don't have to wear a mask. You don't have to go out in public. You don't have to go to venture businesses. But there's a lot of businesses out there that want you to wear a mask, that are not even in my purview. Even if I were to take it down, probably mask businesses will probably say the same to you. They would like you to wear a mask for, not just for your protection, but protection of all their patrons. That is their choice. That is their choice, as it is the same choice as yours, to wear a mask whether you want one, want to or not. You are absolutely right. You have every right not to wear one if you choose not to. However, I cannot change the lines, the minds of everyone else out there. So as, Ms. Nediger, I am how, I have got the floor. I have got the floor. Thank you, ma'am. So until we can change things with the state and continue to work on that relationship, we are not going to be able to affect that type of change. So hopefully, in 75 days, we will have a better understanding of where we are. Hopefully, that will happen sooner. We do have a presentation this morning from the Health District Officer in regards to the vaccination update and where we are in that distribution, somewhere individuals can get the vaccination, and where we are in regards to the playbook. And that timeline, I don't, uh, we will be working on with the state as well because they are the ones distributing that vaccine to us. I think I've covered everything in regards to the notes. I wrote down, oh, yes, and I would like to follow up the same as Commissioner Jung. I want to make sure we've got a more permanent solution, Quartz Lane for Mr. Stockford and Mrs. Burns in regards to those master plans and what we're doing in regards to community services up there. I know that is an issue, so we will continue to work on those two things. All right. With that, I have nothing else. Seeing nothing else from the commission, I will close Commissioner County Manager's announcements. Mr. Manager, we are on to item five.
Item five is an appearance by District Health Officer Kevin Dick and Assistant County Manager Dave Solaro to provide an update on vaccination distribution within Washoe County and an overview of vaccination prioritization lanes and groups as established by the State of Nevada COVID-19 Vaccine Playbook, version three. So we have Mr. Solaro and Health Officer Dick.
All right. Welcome, Mr. Dick and Mr. Solaro. Mr. Dick, or, Mr. Dick, are you going to take us through this presentation first, or Mr. Solaro, who's going to go first here?
Yes, Chair Lucy, Mr. Solaro is going to advance the slides, and then I'll turn it over to him to conclude. But thank you for having us this morning. This is Kevin Dick. I'm the District Health Officer for the Washoe County Health District. And pleased to be able to provide you with an update on COVID-19 vaccinations. I think the, the really important and good news is that we have a very effective vaccine that was developed rapidly, about 94 to 95% efficacy for the two vaccines that went through a thorough FDA review process. So this is going to be key to us being able to move through this pandemic and get back to a more normal functioning society. However, it's very important to recognize that the, the vaccine is going to take a while to get rolled out to most of the population. And while this is occurring, it's very important that we continue to take the precautions, wear masks, socially distance, to reduce the spread of the disease. Even people that are vaccinated with a 95% efficacy vaccine, due to the number of cases that we still have occurring in the community, can become infected because of just the number of different exposures that, that they may have. So it's important that we continue to practice those mitigation measures until we have a large enough portion of the population vaccinated to achieve that herd immunity. Next slide, please, Dave. So the vaccine is an mRNA vaccine, and that means that it doesn't have the complete virus in it. And so it cannot cause the COVID-19 infection. However, what it does is it causes the, the body to replicate a spike protein, which we're familiar with from the pictures of the COVID-19 that stick up off the, the sphere. And so the body then recognizes this protein, understands it shouldn't be there, and develops the, the antibodies and to attack it in the immunity from the disease. In order to get that protection, it requires two shots. Next slide, please, Dave. So there are two vaccines that are now emergency use authorized by the FDA. And the, these are both being delivered and dispensed within the county. And we're receiving them here at the Health District. One is the Pfizer-BioNTech vaccine, and that one is approved for ages 16 and older and requires the person to come back for the second dose 21 days after the first one. And then we have the Moderna COVID-19 vaccine, and that one has the doses 28 days apart. And ages 18 and older are approved to, to receive it. The Pfizer is the one that requires the ultra cold storage, so it's a little bit more complicated to handle. And fortunately, we do have an ultra cold freezer here at the Health District. Next slide, please, Dave. So the, the allocation of the vaccine to the state of Nevada is determined at the federal level, the number of doses that are shipped to Nevada. And then the state allocates those doses to the Nevada counties based on the population level of those counties. And we have limited information about how much vaccine is going to be available in the future, how, how rapidly it's going to be ramped up, what is allocated to the state, and then on to the, the Health District. However, we are, we're limited by the amount of vaccine that we're receiving. So we have capacity to administer additional vaccine. We are seeing some increases in vaccine that's being shipped. This week, we're supposed to receive 6,825 first doses of vaccine here at the Health District, which is a 23% increase from the previous week. So, so that's good news. We also have had a commitment from the federal government, and so far, we have received the second doses to match those first doses during that, during that interval for us to then provide the, the second vaccine. But since we're not getting as much vaccine as there is a demand for, there's a, a need for us to look at some ethical considerations about who should receive that vaccine when there's a limited supply. Dave, next slide, please. So the Nevada State Immunization Program has developed a prioritization approach that's based on CDC guidance. And this is formalized in the state's playbook, which is now, we're in version three of that playbook. Based on the state's playbook, the county, the Health District develops a regional plan that's guided by the, the state's playbook and priorities. And we are required to administer the vaccine based on, on that state plan. Next slide, please, Dave. So we began administering the vaccine under the state's playbook for tier one, using their, the first version of their playbook. As vaccine became available, it was initially provided to our frontline healthcare workers in our hospital systems. Then our additional frontline healthcare workers and first responders, frontline public health and laboratory personnel, law enforcement, et cetera, to the emergency response managers. Concurrently with that effort, the, the federal government also contracted through what's called the Federal Pharmacy Partnership Program, and that engaged CVS and Walgreens in providing vaccinations for staff and residents of long-term care facilities that we have in the community. Next slide. So the CDC, their ASIP group, the Advisory Committee on Immunizations, provided recommendations that addressed the need to prioritize older populations that are more vulnerable to the disease in addition to frontline essential workers. And with those updated, that updated guidance from the CDC, the state updated their playbook and made modifications to the approach for the essential workforce and the, the older, 70 and older population that they revised January 11th. And the Washoe County then revised our plan as well based on that. Next slide. So the, the standards for consideration in identifying which groups should be prioritized to receive the vaccine are laid out on this slide. And the level of exposure looks at a population that has unavoidable close contact with those who may have COVID-19. Then the, the link of exposure that people may have is looking at populations that have unavoidable sustained contact with those that may have COVID-19. Also considering whether a population has special technical skills that are not easily replicated, or they have a job that others in the community depend on for overall community safety and well-being. Also looking at likelihood of increasing community spread. Populations that would increase spread within a community or within closed residential facilities, congregate settings. Looking at mortality and morbidity. Does a population have increased likelihood of death or severe disease? And then looking at, does the vaccine, has it been shown to have an effective immune response in, in that population? Next slide. And so out of those considerations, the state developed an approach that prioritizes vaccines, vaccines under two lanes. And one lane is for the frontline essential workforce, and the other is for the general population. And so the, we're, we're working through the frontline essential workforce with the Washoe County Health District and the pod that we have at the Reno Livestock Events Center taking the lead in this lane now that we have the healthcare workforce and first responders vaccinated and the pharmacies that are vaccinated, the long-term care facilities. And then we also have a general population lane, which is now vaccinating Nevadans 70 years and older. And we're relying on other community partners to help keep that lane moving with vaccinations and pharmacies that are dispensing here in the area. We're trying to balance working through that essential workforce lane and making progress under the general population lane. So as we completed the vaccination of our K through 12 teachers, we are beginning to vaccinate more of the 70 and older population as we're moving through the frontline community support groups. So if you look at the essential workforce lane, we are now down to the third bullet under frontline community support, where we're vaccinating now frontline community support staff that provide services for the most needy in our, our community. And we're providing for the general population, the vaccine to 70 and older. Next slide, please. And so this shows you the, the various locations that we have for dispensing. The Reno Sparks Livestock Events Center, which is operated by the Health District in conjunction with our National Guard partners, CERT volunteers, Medical Reserve Corps volunteers, and, and other temp staffing that we've brought on board, is operating daily except for Sunday last couple of weeks. And we have a throughput of up to 335 people per hour that we've achieved at that facility. Reno South Meadows, I'm sorry, Renown South Meadows facility is also operating a pod where they're vaccinating the 70 and older population. The Community Health Alliance as well. We have pharmacies, Walgreens, Smiths, Allmarts. We have pharmacies, Walgreens, Smiths, Walmarts, Sam's Club, that are administering the vaccine. And then we have other community partners, our fire agencies that have established pods for vaccines and REMSA as well. And REMSA is providing vaccinations for homebound individuals in our community. So we have a number of partners that are engaged in this effort. And so we're eager to have more vaccine in the future as we move forward to be able to get more shots in people's arms. Next slide, please. So I'd like to provide an update on the vaccines dispensed. And the state has a tracking that they post on their website every Wednesday. So with the timing of this meeting on Tuesday, that information is a little bit dated because it's as of last Tuesday. Here you'll see the 75,000-plus doses that were administered in Washoe County and the percent of the population that had received the first and second doses as of last Tuesday. I have the figures on this slide from what the Washoe County Health District had administered as of last Wednesday. I do have updated numbers as of yesterday. We had administered 36,462 doses, of which 22,986 were the first doses administered, and 13,446 second doses that were people that have now completed their vaccinations through the vaccination that the Health District has provided. So with that, I'll turn it over to Assistant County Manager Solaro to complete the rest of the presentation.
Thanks, Kevin, members of the board. As Kevin mentioned, my name is Dave Solaro, for the record, Assistant County Manager. One of the items that I've been tasked with is working with all of our regional partners to start talking about how we actually get our employees vaccinated within the tier system. As Kevin mentioned, there is a shortage of supply of vaccine. And this would be a really easy task if we had plenty of vaccine, but that's just not the case. And so one of the items that the state would like us to follow is kind of this ethical consideration as we work through prioritizing our own employees to fit within the groups as laid out by the version three playbook. I think it's important to note that, you know, if an employee is currently performing their work remotely or can socially distance while performing their work duties, it is not recommended at this time that they receive the vaccine, mostly because of that shortage. I checked the numbers this morning. Roughly 67% of the 630 deaths in Washoe County are in the 70-plus population. So 429 in that 70-plus population. And our workforce just is not in that same category of the types of people that are contracting this disease and dying from it. So as Kevin mentioned, currently, we are working through the community frontline staff, support staff, portion of the governor's version three playbook, which is the frontline workers who support the food shelter, the court and legal service, and social services, and other necessities of life for our needy groups and individuals. Washoe County Health District has done a great job of reaching out to the different groups, the people that fit within these, not only within our workforce, but across all of those partners that we work with, Volunteers of America, for instance, at the homeless shelter and others. Currently, one of the issues we've got is we don't really know how many people are actually working across our community in these different groupings as we go down through the playbook. So right now, we figure it'll take roughly two to three weeks to move through this group and then on to the continuity of governance for state and local. And then, once we get through there, then we're on to the essential public transportation group. So we're doing a really good job of following this playbook. As you'll notice, one of the things that we're trying to make sure we do is make sure that the right people get vaccinated at the right time so we don't get, so we don't have people jumping the line. It's very important at this time, especially with the low numbers of vaccine in our community, that we don't jump ahead. And so one of the things that we have done here at Washoe County, and I'd like to thank Brennan Nichols, Karen Jeffords, and Valerie Wade, who created the recent questionnaire that was provided to our workforce, which actually is capturing those people that can continue to work from home, those people that can continue to social distance, and those people that have no choice. And we need to get them vaccinated as we go through the piece. They also work with me to categorize our workforce into the playbook, keeping in mind the needs to meet the standards as set by the state. The city of Reno and city of Sparks, RTC, others in the area are doing the same exact thing, utilizing these same techniques that we have. As you can imagine, it's not an easy task. And the goal is not to vaccinate our entire workforce. It's just simply to vaccinate those most at risk of infection due to how they need to perform their work for our community. Again, if we had unlimited supply, this would be a super easy conversation. But at this time, that's not the case. And this is a tough way to prioritize our workforce. But utilizing the governor's directive, you can see on the slide, I've taken the Community Services Department and broken it down by division and then branches within that division. And you can see how, for instance, our roads crew fits into the NDOT and local emergency road personnel, pretty easy to fit them in there. But our planning, engineering, and building group, who can be working from home and have been successfully working from home, fall much later in the categories under the community support administrative staff. We've done this throughout the county workforce. The cities have done the same so that we can make sure that our employees are not getting preference with vaccine rollout, just because the Health District is our partner working through this. We have a bunch of frequently asked questions. You know, how will we know when it's our turn to be vaccinated? Just general across the community, we have the covid19washovaccine.com website. There's a great information that the Regional Information Center has put together related to where we're at in the groupings and when to, we're hoping to get to the point where we can talk about when to expect to get into that. But as you can imagine, like I mentioned, it's hard to understand exactly how many employees we've got working across the region, not just within government, but across all of the different roles that fit into these, and how long it's going to take, especially when we don't know really from week to week what our vaccine supply is going to be. One of the items we frequently get asked is, will we need to wear masks and social distance after we are vaccinated? We will. You know, stopping a pandemic requires using all the tools available. The vaccines work with our immune system to protect the body and make it ready to fight the virus. But other steps like continuing to cover your mouth and nose with a mask and physical distance, washing your hands, also help reduce your chance of being exposed to the virus or spreading it to others. So together, the COVID-19 vaccination and following the CDC recommendations to protect yourself and others offers the best protection that we've got. With that, I'd like to go ahead and open that up to questions for the board. Mr. Dick and myself are available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slur. I do appreciate it. Are there any, I have questions. Commissioner Hill, I have you signed in first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation. I just also would like to say, Kevin, Dick, your staff have been really helpful. When I receive constituent questions, inquiries, complaints, on getting back to people and making sure that I know what the responses are. So I really want to say thank you so much for that because there is a lot of confusion and misinformation out there. I know that other communities are doing things to ensure that their 70-plus population is getting vaccinated. And I was curious, is there a concern that we have in our community that our seniors are not being brought to get it vaccinated? They don't have the access to the technology, et cetera? Do we have concerns that we need to address with that?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Hill. This is Kevin Dick for the record. And I appreciate the compliment for our staff. We have 35 people that are staffing our call center to help to provide that information out to the community as well as to be contacting those essential workforces as we're getting closer to them. As far as the 70 and older group, we have a waitlist that they can get on. And then we will contact them when we can schedule them to be vaccinated. And they can do that either through the COVID-19 Washoe Vaccine website, or they can call our call center number at 328-2427 and get on that list. And we have extended invitations to 6,000 seniors here over the past week to get scheduled for vaccinations. And we've been using staff to contact those that only have the phone number provided and don't have the internet access. So we've had a team working up at the Regional Emergency Ops Center as well as our call center, making those calls to, I believe, over 2,000 seniors just over the past few days. So we're working to try to be able to serve that community, even if they're not technology savvy, if they can give us a call. And we've been working to message through the Regional Information Center and the updates that we put out, asking for people to watch out for their neighbors, their acquaintances, people that they know that are 70 and older, to check with them, whether they've been able to get vaccinated, whether they need help with accessing that vaccination, et cetera, to try to help them through that process as well.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Hill. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Slur and Mr. Dick, thank you for being here today. I appreciate the time that you've spent putting this together for us. Mr. Dick, my question is this. And I know you didn't have anything to do with the playbook, but I'm still a little concerned where we have public transit workers on the list where we inoculated bus drivers for the school district, but we didn't inoculate bus drivers who are on the street every single day. And so we've had this conversation with Mr. Cage, the chairman and I. I'm hopeful that we can get them moved up as quickly as possible. They're absolutely essential workers. There's many, many, many people who depend on transit for their only source of moving about, getting to work, and et cetera. And my hope is, is that we'll get them vaccinated sooner rather than later.
Thank you for that comment, Commissioner. And this is Kevin Dick for the record. We have been able to work with RTC and the state immunization program on the playbook. And with the tier that we're in now, being the frontline community support, and recognizing that many of these drivers are providing service to our neediest, to elderly and disabled and homeless within our population, we have been able to begin getting some of them vaccinated as well through our pod. And also, I just wanted to acknowledge and thank RTC. When we were working on a day that we were vaccinating seniors, that Human Services Agency assisted us with getting signed up to be vaccinated because of their use of our senior services program. RTC provided a bus that we were able to use for them to stay warm while they were undergoing their 15-minute waiting period after receiving the vaccine. So appreciate your comments and wanted to let you know that we've been working on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome. Commissioner Jung, do you have anything this morning?
I do, Mr. Chairman. And the vice chairman is the one who actually brought it up to me. I know that you both serve on the RTC. And I would like an update as to how the RTC is carrying out the federal directive concerning the fact that they take federal funds and must do the masking, social distancing, et cetera. We've received a lot of complaints. I'm sure you've seen them that that's not the case. So I know you can't talk about it today and now, but if you could just let me know, or let the board know, or let Mr. Brown know, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
I will absolutely get that information for you, Commissioner Jung. Mr. Dick, I have a couple of questions for you in regards to a lot of the locations in regards to the vaccine pods that we've been utilizing. Have also doubled our testing locations. Do we still have testing going on at the same locations where we're doing now the vaccines? Or have those locations changed?
Thank you, Chair Lucy, Kevin Dick, for the record. We're continuing to utilize the operation at the Reno Livestock Events Center to conduct testing. And those are occurring three days a week now. And we've had a much lower demand for testing, but we can ramp up the testing if we have people that are getting scheduled for that. The, I'm sorry, I can't tell you for certain whether Renown is still providing testing through their South Meadows operation or not. But our Walgreens is continuing to provide testing as well, as well as through the healthcare system. So what we've seen is the demand for testing throughout the county with all the different areas and facilities available for testing is that people are not getting signed up to get tested as they have in the past. And that's available through our call center, through our website, to get scheduled through our testing at the post, and it's free of charge.
Okay. But specifically, the testing locations are not the exact same location as where we're doing the vaccine rollout, is that correct?
We are using the same facility. We just designate one or two of the lanes for cars that arrive that we send through for the testing versus other lanes that we're using for the vaccine stations.
Okay, all right. And then you had mentioned in your presentation in regards to outside of Washoe County and our local health providers, that we were doing, we were utilizing different resources to provide the vaccine locations, which were pharmacies such as Walgreens, Smiths, Walmart, Sam's Club, and other community partner strike teams. Are they getting their allocation of vaccines? Are those coming directly from the state to those third parties? Or are they coming to us and then we are dispensing to the third parties? How does that work?
They are not receiving their vaccine from us. So they're receiving an allocation through the state that's coming to them. And the Board of Pharmacy is working with them on those vaccinations. And then, now just within the last week, with Walmart and Sam's Club receiving the vaccine, that's directly through the federal government and their distribution in agreement with those facilities for providing the vaccinations.
All right. And so when individuals, and I think that's probably representative in regards to the slide that showed Washoe County Health District had administered 31,340 doses as of February 10th. But Washoe County totaled was around 75,000. So there was an additional 40-some-odd thousand that were coming, or 35,000 that were coming from those other third parties, is that correct?
Yes, through them and other partners, the fire agencies, when they're doing pods, et cetera, all roll into that larger 75,000 number that I had for the state. And, you know, we should have an updated number tomorrow that the state will post that'll give us a more current picture of where we're at countywide with those vaccinations. And I would add that I'd hope to have more demographic information to provide you today. That's all input into a system that the state has access to. And they were having some difficulty with the numbers they were pulling out of that and are working to resolve that. So I'm hoping that we have some good demographic information soon that we can provide.
Yeah, that would be fantastic because that was my next question in regards to vaccine equity. Many of the legislators and many of individuals around the community have asked, what is that vaccine equity? Are we making sure that we're addressing everyone from seniors and populations throughout the community to make sure that there isn't just a specific ratio for certain individuals and not for the others? So a little bit more of those demographics would be very beneficial in regards to that information that we could put out. One other question in regards to the third-party providers that you have mentioned, is there on our website that Mr. Solara pointed out, the covid19washovaccine.com, which is a pretty long website? But is that, is there availability for us to roll out and make sure that people have access to the Smiths website where they can register, or the Walgreens, or Sam's Clubs, or Walmart, so that we can provide that information broadly across? Is that on our website right now currently, or will that be coming online? Is that on our website right now currently, or will that be coming online?
Yes, thank you, Chair Lucy, and again, Kevin Dick, for the record. If I could just, one comment on the demographics first. We have made an effort to ensure that we're focusing on the zip codes that we identified through our community health assessment as being disadvantaged populations in our community to, to try to ensure that we're pulling out of those zip codes as we're reaching out to the senior community for vaccinations. So trying to make sure that we're doing that to address our disadvantaged population. And then as far as where, how people can contact the pharmacies to be vaccinated, if you go to that covid19washovaccine website, the, and click on seniors, then you'll get a list and contact information of the, the folks that are providing vaccines that people can sign up through them.
Great, fantastic. And one last question in regards to the ratio that you've pointed through that the state's provided and on, in comparison to the, the two lanes, the prioritization lanes, you know, those are public workers and private, I mean, private citizens, public citizens that are seniors and whatnot, the general population. What is that ratio? Is that just anybody, is for the amount of vaccines we get? Or is there, is there a breakdown that we're holding back 60% for seniors and 40% for our frontline staff? How does that, how does that ratio work out?
You know, I, I think we've kind of varied between 60, 40, and 50, 50. I think what we're trying to do is to make sure that we're keeping the vaccine moving through both of those lanes that we can, that we can control. The, as I had mentioned, the state is providing it for the pharmacies and the federal government as we work with the, the state on the allocation that would go to Renown and Community Health Alliance. So we're trying to keep them going to the, to the extent they have the capacity and staffing to, to provide those vaccinations. And then because we were wrapping up with the, the seniors and senior services and had some availability coming up in our pods, we decided to, and we had the capacity to, to put people on the phones to call those seniors that didn't have technology for access. But we tried to, we decided to focus on, on them for filling a few of our pods to try to keep that, that moving as well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dick. I do appreciate it. Those are all my questions that I have. Are there any other questions or statements from any of the other commissioners? In regards to, Commissioner Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One more thing I, I wanted to point out is Dave Solero, great job in your team putting together a really transparent way for the community to see how the county is going to vaccinate its staff and how we're looking at those vaccinations to ensure that we're showing that we're not taking advantage of vaccinations and really doing it in a transparent and equitable way. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. And I do want to point out one other thing, too. There's been a lot of consternation amongst the media and stories in regards to individuals and elected bodies or, or higher, whatever you, government leaders that you might consider have gotten the vaccines. I know for, from my understanding, nobody on this, at this dais has received a vaccine yet and will not receive a vaccine, because we know that there are more, a very many, more individuals out there that are needing of these vaccines. So I want to assure that anybody who's watching or, or listening that none of the commissioners here have received that vaccine and will continue to wait until all the more vulnerable individuals of this, the community are vaccinated before we do so. So with that, Mr. Dick and Mr. Solero, thank you very much this morning for presenting this. This is definitely the clarification we were looking for in regards to the prioritization of the vaccine and what that rollout will continue to look like for the community ongoing. So thank you, gentlemen. We do appreciate your time this morning.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a note?
Yes.
This PowerPoint is available on the county website for people to look at.
Beautiful. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I do appreciate that. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Seeing nothing further, Mr. Manager, we are on to item six, sir.
Item six is an appearance by Library Director Jeff Scott to provide an update on the Washoe County Library activities during the covid19 pandemic. And Mr. Scott is in person in chambers today.
Welcome, Mr. Scott. It's good to see you again.
Good to see you as well. Thank you, Commissioners, for, for having me today and like to run you through my presentations. So I'm Jeff Scott, Library Director, Washoe County Library System. So March 2020, Washoe County Library has closed all physical buildings to the public in response to covid19. This is based on the governor and the county's guidance on how to provide services during the pandemic. We met three times a week with my leadership team. One of the nice things that the county has done to prepare us for this kind of emergency is the Office 365 that's provided, that's cloud-based. It's a lot of information that we can share, is already on SharePoint, is already on the cloud. We can share information back and forth. And we also have Microsoft Teams, which we were probably one of the first groups to really experiment with Teams and, and be able to make decisions through Teams. So the first week, deciding that the one thing that can't be interrupted during a pandemic is virtual, so provides 100% safety for the staff, for the public, and also provides that continuity of service. So by the end of March, we had twice a day virtual storytimes for the public. And so kids who are missing their local librarians, small children don't know what's going on, they can see Mila, their librarian at Sierra View, doing a storytime for them. And that's the, due to the great work of our staff, our aid service and library events team. Beate Wainart leads that team and did a really fantastic job. Overnight, our team members are now TV stars. So you can see them, tune into Facebook Live and see them every day performing their storytimes. You know, in one sense, you know, it's not the same as being in person, but in another, it actually is expanding the amount of people who can experience a virtual storytime, because you do have busy parents may not be able to make the 10:30 daily storytimes. Now they can see that either live or they can see it recorded later. And this is due to part because the publishers relaxed a lot of the requirements. In the past, you can't really do virtual storytimes because you're violating copyright by reading the story online, and you'd have to get special permission to do so. But publisher relaxed those requirements. We can do more storytimes as long as it's in a controlled environment. So having a Facebook, having a private group allows us to provide these storytimes without violating copyright. We also established virtual reference. So in the past, you would call the local library about your books, about services, about questions. With library staff not in the building at the time, they couldn't do that. So we established a virtual reference line. And so this allows staff to answer the, the virtual reference line from home safely. And this is actually a reverse engineering of the Microsoft Teams software. So you call in, you can talk to a library person seven days a week as a result of that. So it answers a lot of questions that people had. At the time, we had, we shut down the physical buildings. We also closed all the notifications through our integrated library system that lets people know when books are due and then when holds are available. We didn't want to have patients coming in, returning all the materials to the library when we weren't sure about what the infection rate is. We want to keep people off the road unnecessarily during an emergency until we can get better idea of what's happening. We also enhanced our databases and eBooks and downloadable audiobooks. That was a big push for us. Our vendors really enhanced a lot of the services for that. So we had a lot more eBooks, a lot more databases available during that time period. I think March and April, we had shot up 200% in our checkouts as a result of the expansion of that services. We currently have a program with the Washoe County School District where a parent who enrolls their child in Infinite Campus can get their child enrolled in a public library card at the same time. So this really worked well during the pandemic, because we can instantly contact all 64,000 students who are enrolled in the Washoe County School District to talk about library services. So kids are doing things virtual, doing distance learning. They can download the eBook, they can download a database, they can do their research, have continuity of services because of the work that we're doing with that. We also added services with the digital library cards. So in the past, you couldn't get a digital library card because of issues with our vendors outside of legal service area. So they relaxed some of those requirements with the digital library cards. If you don't have a card, you can get a library card online right now. And that's really opened up a lot of services for people who may not have had a time to get into the library now have access because of the digital library card. We also assisted several libraries of the area, Douglas County, Turtle County, a lot of our northern Nevada neighbors, in establishing a digital library card for them so they can also continue with their digital services as well. We were one of the first libraries in the state to provide such an enhanced virtual platform for the public. And it's really paid off in keeping that continuity of service and keeping that interaction lively and keeping kids engaged as well. So April, we have the reopening plan by Governor Sisleck rolled out. By the time he was done speaking, I had a plan ready. And 10 days later, I had to change plan three times based on new information, new guidance. So it's been a challenge to keep up just because of what the rules are about letting people into the building, providing service, and planning for what our public needs and what our staff needs to provide that service. And so we've limited operational ability. Part of that is due to the recession cuts from before. Our budget was cut 40%, and it had to have been restored up until this point. And as a result, we have less positions to provide service. And so when you're having that kind of situation, we've had to automate a lot of our services in the last few years. We've added automated material handlers. We've added a lot of automation, self-checks, so people can just use the library on their own with very little staff interaction. Now with the new guidance, now you're shifting it where staff are going to have to maintain a building, ensure mask compliance, enter and exit people. And in some situations, you have anywhere from three people to manage an 8,000-square-foot building to a 60,000-square-foot building, which provides a challenge. And in the end, what we don't want to do is be in a situation where we've become a community spread point because we're open and unable to do that safely. During the hiring freeze as well, we had lost 11 positions. We're in the process of hiring six library assistant twos right before the pandemic hit. And so those positions are frozen. We have been able to hire management-level staff, because we need management-level staff in order to open facilities for the WCA contract. But these positions or library assistants are really the backbone of how our library operates, providing open hours, providing the drive-through services that we're providing right now as a result of a lot of library assistants doing that work. We also have vulnerable library staff. We have about a third of our staff who identify as vulnerable, either have pre-existing conditions or age that make it where they're at higher risk if they were to get covid. And so our biggest issue, we talked to the county, we talked to security about how to handle that. If we had someone who came in who didn't wear a mask, if we had someone come in who was being disruptive. We've had a lot of situations even before covid where the public has been challenging in order to face compliance. So one instance where someone had their phone on ring, we asked them to put the button on silent, and they responded by throwing a chair through a window. So there's a variety of situations that I didn't want to put my staff in in order to keep them safe, in order to have compliance with the public. And so our dedication was to save reopening, save for the public, save for the staff, and developing services for that. So identified three core services that we provide that are most essential. The access to books, access to the internet, and then access to events, meeting rooms, in the library space. So the meeting rooms, library space, people can stay all day. Obviously, we can't control that population if we continue to have events, programs, or services, or reopen. We can't count or exit people. We can't ensure max mask compliance or other compliance as people are in the building. Internet access, people will set up shop all day, probably at least two hours on our public access computers, but also use their Wi-Fi, and they'll basically be there all day. And again, you're going to get in a situation where if we're trying to exit someone, who do we choose to leave? You know, the grandparents with children, the person using the Wi-Fi, you know, and then having the, the friction with the public with that, with the negative response as well, and on top of being exposed to covid. So those little things became a challenge with the limited staff that we have. One of the things we can provide is access to books. The hold pickup is the easiest thing for us to provide. Have you ever been in a public library where the internet is down and people are just coming in for books? They actually don't spend a lot of time in the building. They come and either, they know what they're looking for, or they have a hold pickup. And that is the easiest way for us to provide service and most efficient. So just like anyway, like we do normally, you can go request a book, have it on the hold shelf, come on down when it's ready to the local library, pick it up, check it out. So you have three different services we provided with this, was the grab-and-go and the drive-through, and then later with the walk-up. We also had items to consider before that point is the REAM study, which is a reopening study, library study that's provided by the Institute Museum on Library Services, which is a federal agency that provides funding and support for libraries. And they did covid study on how long covid stays on books. So our checkout is different from a retail space because people are returning the items, and most businesses are not asking for return items. It would be like if you were getting takeout food and then returned the container and having to know what to do with that container to reuse it. So that poses the challenge about making sure that people can trust that you can check out items from the library and that you can do that safely. So covid on books, there's case amounts up to five days. And so what we did is to quarantine the books as they got returned. To return a book, we put it on a cart or put it on a platform and then move it aside and then date those books so we know when those books have been disinfected through time. And that was the most efficient way for us to provide that turnaround time. And then people want to be notified of their hold pickup until we would check those books in, and it would trigger the hold, it would trigger the notification. So that worked pretty well for that test. And in May, we purchased personal protective equipment for our staff, masks, gloves, face shields, hand sanitizer, Clorox wipes. We have a very aggressive administrative support staff who was able to wrangle Clorox wipes. So we should get a bit of honor for that in May. So by May, we were getting everything ready. We had a reopening plan, we have our equipment, and we're ready to go. So grab-and-go services start in June. All the libraries either have a grab-and-go or a drive-through. South Valleys and Northwest Reno have a drive-through window that we reactivated because both of them were actually looking at decommissioning them just because of lack of use. Those continue to be our busiest locations. And we also have the grab-and-go. The grab-and-go would be different, so you'd actually be able to enter the library. We would make sure you're wearing a mask, check the temperature. You can go in, go to your hold shelf, pull your books, put on the self-check, check out, and then leave. And that worked pretty well for the most part. We also had masks for the public to provide. We provided bandanas for them with the knowledge that some people who don't want to wear masks, may not want to wear medical masks for whatever reason. So wearing bandanas worked pretty well to convince people to wear a mask at the time. Most of that was probably Spanish Springs Library. We had more of the friction, but they all complied with wearing a mask coming in. And it's a good test for us because it allows us to let people know, like, good behavior is coming into the library. And eventual reopening for browsing is mask compliance and knowing they have to use social distancing. And these are the things that they're going to be expected of your behavior when you come into the library. So from June to mid-November, we were doing the grab-and-go and the drive-up. What happens usually in the first few, few, couple of weeks when we reopen the hold pickup, as we saw in June and as we saw in January, longer lines were processing, I think in January, about 20,000 holds in that time period. And so there's longer lines during that first two weeks. And we're processing 1,000, 1,000 books in a four-hour period, where normally we would process about 500 books when we're open all day. So higher demand and pent-up demand runs up where there's longer lines. After two weeks, it gets into a normal sequence of events. So as we're starting to see this week, you're getting down to 400, 500 checkouts in a four-hour period, which is half of what it was before. So you're still going to see some lines, but it's the easiest way to provide this service because the drive-up, you've been to a restaurant. You go, the difference between doing a grab-and-go restaurant where you're going curbside versus pulling up to like a Wendy's, the Wendy's is a lot more efficient. You go in, you make a phone call, here I am, I have my books. The books are waiting for you there. We check them out to you, hand them to you, and then that's it. So it's a really efficient way to provide that service. And I think the reason why the South Valleys and Northwest Reno libraries are the most popular ones is because it's the drive-through. You don't have to get out of your car. You don't have to go through the protocol. If you're vulnerable, that's probably the safest way to provide that library service. So we also provided early voting at the same time, end of October, during the two-week early voting time. 58% of voters voted at your local libraries because, because we were open for that. And the top voting location was Spanish Springs Library. So with over 11,000 votes at Spanish Springs, we were the top location. The top third was also South Valleys Library, was third. So providing this during a pandemic, you have virtual services, you have public services, people can check out books, and you could go and vote at your local library, all done safely, all done following protocol, and, and watching everything as it goes. So I think the staff could be really commended for being really innovative and providing this service and doing so, both protecting our staff and having a continuous service with virtual, having the physical services with the grab-and-go, and also assisting with other services. So mid-November, with the governor's order, we did decide to pull back to 100% virtual. We were seeing increasing number of incidents where staff works have covid exposures. The covid tracing had started to lag. And so previously, we would have a staff member who may have a covid exposure. They would know before they started to work, they would quarantine, successful quarantine, and come back to work. We're getting incidents in which we weren't notified until after they had worked during the whole week. And so the result of that is having to quarantine a lot of the staff because of that exposure. Luckily, we've only had one covid positive case among the library staff. But the number of exposures and following protocols was what has been the most disruptive with that. And that's pretty consistent with most businesses. If you read, there's a New York Times article last week about Rhode Island and their challenges to reopen the schools. You know, their schools were ready, they had their protective equipment, they had their protocols. First day, the principal's office had a covid-positive person. They're all home for protocol. And then that kept happening and happening and happening. And so that's one of the things that happens is if you're not following these guidelines and you get these covid exposures and you have to follow the protocol, then you're having a continual disruption of service. So best-case scenario is it's annoying. So best case scenario is it's annoying, but worst case scenario, people get sick, get infected or die. And so we had to close during that time period because eventually if we did stay open, we'd probably be forced to close due to exposure issues. And that's kind of what the hard decisions we have to make going forward and keeping our people safe and keeping the public safe is knowing which to do in that situation. I think we made the right decision going virtual and also often an opportunity for our staff to help with the health district. So with the health district, with the schools needing to reopen and being short on supply with COVID tracers, we have about 36 of our staff volunteer to be COVID tracers with the health district. And so what that helps with is with the school district. So the top exposure cases are with the school. At the time before, we had this surge in staff to help, we only had probably about nine COVID tracers with the health district. And then at the time in November, you're having 600, 700 cases a day, which obviously they can't get through that time period, even if they were working 24 hours a day. And so with providing the staff assistance with the COVID tracing, that'll, that'll help us more precisely do the investigations and then reduce the amount of incidents that you have in the schools. And so an example of that would be you may have someone who's COVID positive, they visited three classrooms, now you're quarantining 100, 100 people, 100 students, and then, you know, 12 teachers. But when you're doing the contact tracing investigation, you might find out the person spent only like a minute and only talked to one person. So then maybe you're saying only five people are having to quarantine. So that increases the operational ability for the school district because we can complete these COVID trace tests, investigations. And that continues to go right now. We had all of our staff trained in December, had a roundup ready to go in January. And I think that's a big reason why you're seeing such low numbers in the community right now because we're able to do that tracing and assist the school, the school district and also ease the burden and help us doing these contact trace investigations. One case can take all day, you're making phone calls, you know, you have COVID, where did you go? Calling all those people, that can take an entire day for one case. And so now with so many people working on it, I think that we're able to keep that and those numbers low. So we're optimistic about the combination of the numbers being down, vaccines rolling out, and then our operation ability being able to ramp up in the next few months. So some of our good accomplishments during all this during the pandemic, we had the Sparks Dorfus Libraries Renovation Funded, the Tucino Trust. So we're working on that renovation right now, we should start work on that in March. We got six automated material handlers through CARES funding, so that's going to increase our operational ability because items will automatically be able to check in and then quarantine. We also have the Jail Library Services Grant that was funded by the Library Service Technology Act. And so that provides us some funding startup to work with the detention center to provide library services there. So we have purchased the books for there, we're working with the Detention Center Library Aid that's been hired for the detention center and start to provide more books and materials and then sustain that. So about $10,000 to weed out the collection, add more books that are more relevant for the detainees, and then sustain that through the library's budget with $2,000 a year to keep up the collection. We purchased personal protective equipment for staff, we continue to do that, we check in with managers, we're meeting three times a week to check on any kind of issues, any kind of situations that may arise. Developing our virtual and in-person services during global pandemic is certainly an accomplishment. And then as a result, we were also nominated by an Institute Museum of Library Services Gold Medal by Senator Cortez Masto, which is the highest medal you can get in United States Library Services. So I'm proud of my staff, able to do everything that we've done in the last year. It's been challenging, but I think they've really braved through and they're creative, forward-thinking staff is really why you were able to complete this continuity service as a result of their hard work. So moving forward, we just got the governor's new plan, so we're going to continue to work towards reopening later this year. We're hoping to have a full reopening sometime later this year. We have our current work with the health districts, we have a third of our staff helping with our health district, a third of our staff helping with virtual services, a third of our staff working with the public with the grab and go services. We're hoping to ramp up those services, add more hours, we're going to add more hours in March. Incline will add more hours and days, North Valleys will open in March. We're also experimenting with some of the services until we can allow browsing in the library with children. So in incline, they can come in and check out books on a cart. So they can have more of that literacy experience, they're making their own selections of books based on what they see and it helps with early literacy experience. So we're going to see as a test to see how that goes in incline before we start expanding that to other services. You know, we're continuing with the health district, keeping the numbers down, renovation of our libraries, installation automated material handlers will happen in March. We're developing a new five-year strategic plan later this year. Continue to develop plans hopefully for a new North Valleys Library. Work on a renovation plan for the CRV Library that's in the Reno Town Mall. And then we're further assisting with the Vulnerable Population Strategic Initiative, developing a database of resources that people who are in a vulnerable state, whether they're homeless or whether they may be on the verge of homelessness, they know that they can get, here are the food banks, here are the food pantries, here's other systems you can provide that gives you guidance so that you don't, don't become homeless and then if you become homeless, how to become housed again. So needs going forward is, you know, cases continue to trend downward, that's great. Vaccinations increase, so that's great. We still have 11 staff positions that are still frozen. If we can get those unfrozen, we can accelerate our reopening plans and then getting the library staff vaccinated as well. This is give a little example of all of our services. We have Tina over here downtown Reno, writing books during our grab and go. We have Robin, Northwest Reno, doing an online STEAM, SLIME science program. And then we have Shonika, who's in the corner there, helping with the health district and she's been our key going forward, coordinating all the health district work with the library staff and providing that support. And then that's our, we're still providing programs and services virtually. So we have our library explorer that comes out quarterly. And this is our latest one, has all virtual programs and events that are available. So I'm optimistic about being able to reopen later this year. I think that we're in a good position right now, providing services, providing support. Keeping the schools open is really critical and I think the work that our library staff are doing is making that so. So we're getting into the end zone, we're almost there, so I'm optimistic about what our plans are. So that's my presentation. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. We do appreciate you coming here on an annual basis to provide us an update on how the library services are going. I want to start off by thanking your, your staff and their willingness to help in the COVID response. I know the contact tracing was essential early, later last year when we had contracted with the school district to help them and committed to helping them, your staff stepped up. And I want to thank your staff from the bottom of my heart for doing that because I know that that is definitely outside of what they had signed up to do. But being as intelligent and articulate as your staff are, usually are, they have done a phenomenal job. So I want to thank you with that. I do have a couple of questions I want to start off with. You know, obviously, as you mentioned in Governor Sislex's reopening plan, he did allow your capacities to go to 50% as of yesterday. And I know you have your physical services planned for April. Why April? I mean, that's, it's a ways away. I mean, March 15th to 30 days from now, I know you have staffing issues. Is there a potential of doing maybe a tiered reopening, kind of a reduced hours, maybe, you know, openings for specific groups, seniors? Because some of the biggest, you know, and I've, I've sat here for many years and said this, those are, your libraries are more than just libraries or community centers. And many of our seniors and a lot of our children, my children including, go to the library, enjoy looking, as you said, in the early literacy programming. I think it is tremendous for them to be able to go and look at a book and, and touch and feel and see that. Is there potentials of those opportunities with your staff, knowing that there are some staff limitations, to do that at certain, at certain, not, you know, not full-blown, but have a, have a tiered opening?
Yeah, well, we're working on a new reopening plan. So our older reopening plan is now no longer valid. So we're going to have a new reopening plan coming up soon that'll address that. So we'll have, we have questions from volunteers who have been vaccinated, how can I help? You know, we have people who are children who want to have the kids browse. And so we're working on different tiers for that. So March, they're going to have more hours for sure. And so the first phase is just expanding the amount of hold pickup hours and then looking at and expanding the computer internet access and then looking at browsing services. So that's going to be a tiered, that'll be our tiered reopening consistent with the governor's plan. So we'll have that and I'll take that to my board shortly. We'll probably have a special meeting once that's taken through the staff's input and the unions' input and then the board's input and then have that rolled out and on the website soon.
Right. And I mean, as we move forward and obviously we continue to see a downward trend in the number of cases and, and our ability to continue to vaccinate increases, the need for contact tracers is going to dip off. And so not necessarily have to have as many as we've had before. And so those will, that'll kind of change, that correlation and that ratio will change. So I'm assuming that you'll be able to have more staff moving forward and with a number of the innovations that you have put into place between the automated, automated material handling and a number of the renovations that you've done at the different libraries, I think that will help expedite that reopening. And I really would like to push for that because that is the one service that our community continues to utilize and needs and has access to information. The one other thing I would like to ask, and then I'll turn over to the other commissioners, as you've pointed out, for the vulnerable populations as part of your strategic plan and initiative, have you worked with Director Amber Howell at our place for potentially providing a, very much that we do at the detention center? And I don't want to make that correlation, but having that library services for those vulnerable populations, the children, the families, the women that are there, having access to libraries, you know, as a source of entertainment, as a source of information?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we did work when the shelter was downtown in Record Street. So we went out there to provide outreach, but we're certainly looking at putting in, sustaining a library there as well. So that's something that we can look at doing. We haven't, we haven't had that conversation yet, we certainly can do that.
Perfect. That would be fantastic. I would love to see that in the coming year and ongoing. So I will, I thank you for coming and I will turn over my other commissioners. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I, and I'll, I'll be brief. Mr. Scott, you know, I've sent along several emails from some folks who have had to sit in lines waiting and have expressed their frustrations. I, I will note that there was never a question in their emails, it was just an expression of frustration, there was never a question mark used. So I, I, I mean, I don't know what else to say, but I'm hopeful that you guys will open up fairly soon and, and, you know, alleviate some of the, the lines for those folks who do want to come in. And then I'm hopeful that you'll maintain that drive-through process for folks that don't.
Absolutely, yeah. And we were responding to all their inquiries, even if this is an expression of frustration, you know, we respond, you know, we're, we're working on expanding services, spending hours. As I mentioned in the presentation, the amount of wait time has gone down because the hold pickup is reduced because we've got that big 20,000 hold threshold gone through. And so now it's not as long of a wait. So hopefully people will be coming back for that, but certainly ramping up to the fully reopening later this year.
I've, I've seen some pretty vicious lines at the, at the Spanish Springs Library though.
Yeah, it was, it was, I think the first wave was Southwest and Northwest. The first week in January 19th was the worst. And then for some reason, it hit Spanish Springs, week three. The last week, I think, was the worst week, but it's coming back down. And we also added a Wednesday for Spanish Springs, so that should help with having the three days of service available until we can add more hours.
I appreciate you being attentive to the issue.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Manager Brown, did you have a comment?
You know, I just want to acknowledge the wonderful job that Jeff and his team have done. You know, the, he describes it as supporting the health district. He has been supporting the school district in a big way, very quietly, that has helped support the reopening of our schools. That was no small feat. He didn't have to do it, his librarians didn't have to do it. Second thing I would point out is, I think you all know I'm a big fan of embracing technology. You can see from this presentation how this group has embraced technology to be able to provide services under very difficult conditions. I also want to acknowledge our tech services group that works to support the libraries. Really a phenomenal job in terms of what they've been able to do. And he's been a team player. When we started the budget process, those frozen, those frozen positions he's talking about, were not easy for him to get up, give up. But at that time, we were in a position where from an operating budget standpoint, we needed some help. So Jeff, we won't forget that as we go into the new budget season. I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you, Manager Brown. I do appreciate that. Commissioner Hill.
Thank you, and thank you, Jeff Scott, for this great presentation. I think it's really important for the community to understand all the incredible work that you and your team have been doing during this process. And libraries are just an amazing resource in our community and I think the only place you really can go to and not buy anything and just sit. And so I can't wait until, you know, you can get open. And thank you so much for working with your board and your team to make that happen. I would just say that I'm hoping that we'll be getting some federal funds for local governments and maybe think about other ways that you should, you know, add to your list of touch-free, you know, infrastructure for your libraries to keep your team safe and the community safe. So when, when we look at reopening, we've got those in place for, you know, the, the moment moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Commissioner Jung, you have been a tireless advocate of the libraries for years as a, not only as a commissioner, but as a, as a patron. Do you have any comments this morning?
I, I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much, Mr. Scott. I want to echo what the county manager said and also point out through the board's information that the chairman really was instrumental in getting staff and directors excited about switching from one job to another to ensure that our schools could open because schools, as we learned this last year, are a major part of our infrastructure that allows grownups to have their children supervised while they pursue their economic, their personal economic development. So that credit goes to Mr. Brown and Chairman Lucy as well as to the library director, Mr. Jeff Scott, whom has, as Mr. Chairman mentioned, the librarians with their backgrounds have had that unusual and very vital skill of being able to read through the data and do the contact tracing, being officious, if that's the right word, as librarians often are, often are, whom I deeply admire, by the way, and I think they have the best job also in the world. But I, I just want to tell the director and their staff how much we appreciate them. And I know there will be a time where we can do this more formally, but if it were not for the library board, the chairman and the manager to work in conjunction with the school district, I don't believe we'd be in the shape that we are in with the ability that we've really kept schools open pretty much as much as we possibly can, obviously with flex. And it's not our responsibility to keep the schools open, but we, the chairman and the manager recognized it was so prohibitive for children to be unsupervised or even supervised at home, for people to perform their work tasks. And many children's parents were essential workers who were then left home alone, who then went to the malls and congregated. So I want to commend the chairman and the manager and the library director for taking that seriously and making it a goal. And it was a goal we could measure, evaluate. And I know, as Mr. Brown said, he also quietly, as does the chairman, so quietly does, makes these things happen and really makes other people look great. And that's great. That's what's part of being a community is. And while we have lanes and lines that we have to follow, there's nothing that ever stops us from doing the right thing for the majority of the people in Washoe County. So thank you, Mr. Scott. You've been a fearless leader on many fronts. I admire you, I admire your staff, and I know you've taken a lot of heat and I want to put it on the record, I appreciate the weekly updates that your staff sends to commissioners like me to keep us in the loop. And then finally, the board of trustees for the library, I know they're getting a lot of heat as well, and they have done so well with data and best practices to be commended and as Mr. Brown said, are embracing all the technological advancements to ensure that we can forever keep everybody safe. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. We do appreciate it. All right, seeing for the comments from the board, Mr. Scott, thank you again. I do appreciate it and please extend our heartfelt thanks to all of your staff and we look for a speedy return.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. All right.
Mr. Chairman, that presentation can be found online as well.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I do appreciate that. All right, that concludes our presentations this morning. We're on to, to our work for the day. So we are on to item seven, these are our donations. And Mr. Vice Chair, would you take us through our donations this morning?
Be happy to, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. That's item, item seven, 7A1 through item 7C2. That's Item 7, 7A1 through Item 7C2. Item 7A1 is recommendation to accept a donation of $3,386.57 from various businesses, organizations, and individuals for the regional parks and open space programs and facilities, and direct the comptroller's office to make the appropriate budget amendments, that is the Community Services Department. Item 7A2 is recommendation to accept a donation in the amount of $372,800 from Vera Silberstein, gift trust for improvements to Bowers Mansion, and direct the comptroller's office to make the appropriate budget amendments. Item 7B1, Item 1 is recommendation to, one, acknowledge various items donated totaling an estimate of $26,760. Item 2 is accept a donation from the Nevada Retina Associates to Washoe County Human Services Agency to support children of foster care in the amount of $3,500. Item 3, accept donations from various donors to Washoe County Human Services to support welfare activities in the amount of $11,327.90, retroactive for the period of November 21st, 2020 through January 20th, 2021, and direct the comptroller's office to make the necessary budget amendments. Item 7B2 is recommendation to, one, acknowledge various items donated totaling an estimate market value of $4,619.16, and two, accept donations to the Human Services Agency Senior Services Fund to support operations to the Washoe County Senior Centers in the amount of $4,570, retroactive for the period of November 21st, 2020 through January 20th, 2021, and direct the comptroller's office to make the necessary budget amendments. Item 7C1 is recommendation to accept a donation of two K-9 Storm Vest carries and ballistic panels for K-9s valued at $6,258 for the Washoe, from, rather, the Washoe County K-9 Partners to the Washoe County Sheriff's Office K-9 Unit. And Item 7C2 is recommendation to accept a donation of a K-9 dog valued at $9,000 from Washoe County K-9 Partners to the Washoe County Sheriff's Office K-9 Unit, and that is the one that's near and dearest to my heart, and that is in the form of a motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second from Commissioner Herman. Do I have any public comment on any of these items, Madam Clerk?
I do not see anybody signed in.
All right. We do have, I'm assuming we have a Zoom public comment? I'm getting that notification now.
We have Ann Marie Grant speaking on Item 7A2 via Zoom.
All right, all right, Ms. Grant.
Ann Marie Grant, for the record, sister of Thomas Purdy, murdered by Reno Police and Washoe County Sheriff's Office. I'm not sure what kind of K-9 is being donated to the sheriff's office, but police dogs are often portrayed as harmless, lovable members of the local police, but many departments across our country, and we've actually seen it from Washoe County Deputy Jason Wood, and the county has already paid out money in a lawsuit because he allowed the K-9 to attack a surrendering man, but here's some takeaways about police dogs. One, some police forces use biting dogs far more than any others. K-9 bites can cause life-altering injuries, even death. Many people bitten were not violent and were suspected of minor crimes. Most police, police dog bite victims are men. Police officers sometimes can't control the dogs, worsening injuries. There's little accountability or compensation for many bite victims. Fortunately, the man who was attacked in Washoe County by Jason, Deputy Jason Woods' K-9, did sue the county, and as usual, the taxpayers paid for their bad acts. That's all I have to say, I'm opposed to it.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Grant. All right, do we have another public comment? I believe we do.
I believe there's a gentleman signing in.
We do, hold on one second. Sir, if you want, you can just come on down, you can finish that. You can come on down, sir, we can finish it if you'd like.
Not on this item.
Oh, it's not on this item, okay, thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
And I hope nobody else signed in.
All right, seeing no further public comment, we will close public comment on this item. I do have a motion and a second. You know, I just want to thank all of our donors, those that are donating for our regional parks, our Human Services Agency, whether foster children or seniors, our Sheriff's Office, all these donations are very helpful to the continued service of all of our communities, so we want to thank all those individuals that have taken the time and funds to do so. So I have a motion and a second, no further discussion. I'll call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries unanimously with all of the commissioners voting, please affirm your vote on the screen. We are on to our consent agenda, this is Item 8. Mr. Manager, are there any changes to the consent agenda this morning that we need to make, or are they all in order?
They're all in order, Mr. Chair.
All right, we have consent items 8A through 8E, are there any items that any of the commissioners would like to take out or have any further discussion on? Seeing none, looking for a motion to accept the consent.
Motion to exempt.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hill, a second from Vice Chairman Hartung. Is there any public comment on any of the items in Item 8?
You see, nobody signed in.
All right, seeing, we do have motion, I'm getting motion from, we do have public comment from Zoom, we'll look at that, we'll get that entered into the system.
We have Ann Marie Grant signed in.
All right, Ms. Grant, the floor is yours, ma'am, and you are speaking on which item, Ms. Grant?
I'm speaking on 8E, Ann Marie Grant, for the record, sister of Thomas Purdy, murdered by Reno Police and Washoe County Sheriff's Office. Item 8E, no surprise, it's on a consent agenda item, so you can sweep it under the rug. Possible settlement of claim number 2021123 filed by Joseph Ebel against Washoe County for a vehicle accident that occurred in December 2020. $35,000 out of taxpayer money because Washoe County Sheriff's Office rear-ended him and totaled his vehicle, just more expenses being funded by taxpayers. The sheriff's office gets a big enough budget, I'm opposed to the item. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. All right, seeing no further public comment, we'll close public comment, bring back to the board. I have a motion and a second, seeing no further public comment and no discussion, I will call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting, please affirm your votes on the screen. Mr. Manager, we are on to Item 9.
Item 9 is recommended that the Board of County Commissioners acknowledge and accept the First Regional Animal Services Board periodic report as presented for FY 1718 and FY 1819.
All right, and we have Ms. Cheyenne Shul from Animal Services joining us via Zoom to provide us an update for Item 9 for her annual update. Ms. Shul.
Good morning, almost afternoon, Commission and staff. Cheyenne Shul, for the record, Animal Service Director. I also would like to mention that Reno City Councilwoman Naomi Doer, also my Advisory Board Chair, is present and would like to say a few words towards the end of my presentation. Thank you for having me today, I'm here to talk to this commission about our Animal Services Advisory Board periodic report, which is the first of its kind, and it's covering fiscal year 18 and fiscal year 19. I want to also introduce members of our advisory board. Again, Naomi Doer is our chair, and also Reno City Councilwoman. Dr. Annette Rink is our vice chair, Board of County Commissioners Kitty Jung, Spark City Councilmember Paul Anderson, Executive Director of the SPCA of Northern Nevada Jill Dobbs, Irene Payne, and Al Rogers. Just as a brief summary of the advisory board history, we had, this board was formed by the Washoe County Board of Commissioners, County Commissioners in 2016. The purpose of the board is to have a sounding board, an opportunity for our community to attend meetings, to have open dialogue and discussion with staff, with the board, to explore recommendations, to explore goals, and essential tasks and projects and updates relative to animal services. We have quarterly meetings of this board, we generally talk about departmental updates, statistics, we do overviews of the budget, recommendations and feedback, any special interest projects, and occasionally the advisory board makes recommendations and also asks for special projects and research, which the staff work with the board to provide and to update the community. As part of our updates to the board every quarter, statistics and notable developments within our department are provided to the board and discussed. The statistics that you're looking at here on this slide are the intakes for animal services fiscal year over fiscal year for the last several years. Animals that are taken in at animal services are comprised of stray animals, lost animals, animals that were seized for cruelty reasons, animals that are here pending investigations, but we average 13,000 animals on an annual basis. We talk about correlations to intakes, we talk about different things that might impact the number of animal changes up or down in the statistics. For example, when we get to 2020, I believe that's going to be an anomaly of a year, we saw a significant decrease in the number of calls for service as well as animals. So we do talk about those in each of our quarterly meetings. What comes in must go out, and so one of the things that we talk about are all of the various ways that animals leave our facility. One of the things that we prize and that other organizations across our industry really look up to regional animal services is for our return to home or return to owner percentage. We average over 40%. The slide you're looking at includes deceased animals, so if you ever, if you look at just live animals, we average over 40% of return to home each year, which is significantly higher than what the national average is, the national average for most shelters is in the 20s, and so many organizations reach out to us to talk to us about what are we doing, what is successful, what has been our most key successful elements of our return to home program, which I'm going to talk about momentarily. So the blue number there is the return home, the orange percentage is animals that were rescued. So as part of our interlocal agreement with the Nevada Humane Society, it allows animal services to transfer animals that have already been through the five-day stray hold and have not been reclaimed by their owner, to be transferred to the Nevada Humane Society, which is co-located on our campus, and they provide adoption services for animal services through that interlocal agreement. Additionally, we work with the SPCA of Northern Nevada Pet Network and 50 to 60 other rescue groups for the animals that are not taken by the Nevada Humane Society, to provide every opportunity for live release of those animals that are deemed adoptable. Of course, we do handle disposal of deceased animals from our community, so those are animals that unfortunately are hit by a car or someone's animal perished, we take care of the disposal for those. And then the euthanasia, 8% and 7%, and died in our care, are animals generally that they can be potentially sick or injured upon impound, or sometimes we have animals that unfortunately give birth here and some of them are deceased upon birth. So again, going back to just considering live animals that come through our doors, we have a 95% live release rate, again, another statistic that's worth celebrating. So one of the things that helps us with our successful return to home program is our free microchip program, which was approved by this board in 2012. Basically, supporting any Washoe County resident and their pet can have a free microchip through animal services, and it helps to support getting animals expeditiously returned home. It's a permanent identification method for implementation into an animal's under their skin, and that identification is registered to that specific owner for the life of the animal. And this helps us get animals home quickly. This slide represents animals that were returned, out of all animals returned home, the blue number represents animals that were returned by way of a microchip, and so the program as approved in 2012 for free microchips, animal services implemented this program in 2013, and since 2013, we have implanted 30,000 microchips to Washoe County pets. That includes dogs, cats, and even a few livestock and reptiles. This program has been very successful, as the numbers are indicative here. So as we take a little bit of a deeper look into animals that were able to defer from the shelter, those animals are animals that we were able to get returned home in the field off of the truck and not brought into the shelter, we look at these statistics every month, and so this helps to steer some of those programs, such as the free microchip program, the free ride home program, which includes our community giving, being given the opportunity, if their animal has a license or a microchip, we will return that animal home if we're able to contact you without impounding it. This has been a successful strategy to help expedite the number of animals returned home and not brought into the shelter. So the slide you're looking at, the green represents the animals that were returned in the field and never brought into the shelter, and the blue are animals that were impounded at the shelter, for whatever reason, we're not able to contact the owner, and then those animals later got returned to their owner. Animal Services handles about 30,000 calls for service every year. Those calls include a variety of requests, such as animals at large, animal welfare calls, bites, assist to other departments, sometimes we get law enforcement requests, fire department requests, a number of calls come into our door every year, or come through our call center every year. We are continually, continuing to work on improving the number of cruelty case investigation strategies. We have taken a strong initiative to put together a strategy to improve our cruelty case case reports, as well as improve our relations with the DA's office, veterinarians within our community, and other law enforcement partners. As a result of those efforts, we have been able to significantly increase the number of cruelty case citations and notice of civil penalties that we've issued. For example, in 2015, animal services issued approximately 50 citations and/or civil penalties for cruelty or welfare-type violations. In 2017, and I'm sorry, in 2019, we issued 353 citations or a notice of civil penalties for animal cruelty or animal welfare violations. Again, we've put a large focus on improving what we put together for the DA's office, improving our investigations and our evidence collection, and we're really starting to see a turnaround in those efforts. Animal Services has a number of notable newsworthy stories that happen on a regular basis. We pick a few that we share with the advisory board every quarter, and great things are happening behind our doors, it's really nice to see that we are taking proactive measures to ensure that the animals that are in our care are receiving top-notch enrichment and care, as well as the things that are happening out in the field are aiming to stem the tide of some of our, or some of our issues that happen in the community that oftentimes are reactive instead of proactive. And so we put together a short little video of staff preparing some edible enrichment things that we provide to the animals that are within our care, and these are pupsicles and as well as Kong toys that we stuff with edible things that give the dogs here something to do while they're in our care and in our shelter. that give the dogs here something to do while they're in our, in our care and in our, in our shelter. And additionally, the other picture there that might be difficult to tell what's going on. A couple of years ago, animal services was dispatched to a joint effort between Truckee Meadows Water Authority, Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, NV Energy, as well as Comstock Veterinary Staff to, there was a canal that had a very steep embankment out in the Verde area, and a bunch of deer had somehow fallen into the canal. And some of them unfortunately had to be euthanized, but a large majority of them were very cold and had to be rescued out of the canal. And animal services joined in that joint effort to help rescue those animals and get them on their way. Animal Services Fund is one of Washoe County's special revenue funds. That includes other various revenue sources, but is primarily funded by a property tax of three cents for every hundred of assessed property value. And is appropriated to cover the shelter services as well as the regional field enforcement operations. Again, as I mentioned earlier, animal services shares our campus with Nevada Humane Society. NHS or Nevada Humane Society shares a portion of the costs for the shared campus here on Longley. And this is something that we do provide to the advisory board during our quarterly meetings. It's an overview of our budget. But I just put it in simplistic terms for this presentation's purposes. So in 2018, our revenue increased approximately 5% from the year prior, primarily due to higher property tax collections, but also due to increased license compliance for dog licensing. Fiscal year 19, we had an increase of approximately 12%. Again, primarily due to higher property tax collections. But we also have higher animal license compliance, which helps to provide that increase for revenue. Expenditures for 2018 increased by approximately 8%. However, we were still under, under budget by over 700,000. Also in fiscal year 19, expenditures increased by 7%, but we were also under budget by over 700,000. Much of the work that animal services does ties back to our strategic objectives, which we put into place in 2015, which still holds true today. We still do, a lot of our initiatives and work are tied into these four strategic objectives specifically. I'm just going to talk about a couple of examples for each one, because there's so many things that I could say about the various strategic objectives, but we're limited on time today. So animal services wanted to create a greater presence within our community. And so we want to, we wanted to share more about what is happening behind closed doors here at animal services, some of the great work that we're doing and getting more exposure out into our community. And so we're really working on trying to get more social media activity, more website friendliness within our own website, and also sharing with the community some of the great things that are happening here at our department. And so we've been working with the communication team and Instagram messages that kind of convey some of the important work that we're doing here, animal services. Proactive outreach and education has been a large focus for animal services over the last five to six years and continues to be as this program organically grows. And we continue to put effort into stemming the tide of, you know, animal issues that are in our community to try to prevent animals from coming into our shelter in the first place, but also to help give the tools to our community to be responsible pet owners. So we've put a real heavy focus in this area. We've done a number of things in terms of proactivity and helping our community be responsible pet owners through vaccination clinics, career fairs, educational events. We have implemented some pet food resources for our senior population. We've also done, over 7,700 animals have been vaccinated in fiscal year 19 through our vaccination clinics. So it's just a sampling of some of the great work that we're doing to try to help provide the necessary and needed resources to our community through, through resources that we already have and provide on some level. Effective regulation and compliance, of course, is part of what we do. And going back to that proactive measures and, and programs and education, we want to make sure that effective regulation compliance is a tool in the shed that we utilize. It's not the first tool that we utilize. So if education and resource providing and, you know, the being the conduit of that information that's necessary for a pet owner to do the right thing, if we're able to be that, hopefully we can avoid having to use punitive approaches, but that is there if it's necessary. And then the last one is providing that training and knowledge to my team to make sure that they are professional, they have the tools necessary to do the best job, that it's consistently being provided and that we're all working from the same sheet of music in terms of training, expectations. We really focus hard on providing those tools to the team so that we're working very hard to be professional and have the background and the training, the expertise to be that resource center for our community. One of the specific requests that the advisory board requested was a trap neuter return cat program update from a former COO of Nevada Humane Society. So Regional Animal Services works in conjunction with Nevada Humane Society for a trap neuter and return program for cats. And where cats that come through our facility that are feral or wild go next door to the Nevada Humane Society to be spayed and neutered, vaccinated, microchipped, and re-released back into the community so that they can live out their lives as they always have as a wild or feral cat. So Mr. Westbrook came in and provided an update to the advisory board about the program. He talked about the statistics and the number of animals that have been microchipped and, and spayed and neutered and released back into the community and the inner workings of that program and how successful it has been over the years in partnership with animal services. Animal Services and the advisory board have talked on a number of occasions about code amendments and updates so that we have that opportunity for our community to take part in the conversations. One of the code sections that we've identified as a priority that needs some refinement is the code related to dangerous dogs. And this code amendment was last touched in 2016, somewhere around that timeframe. And so animal services has had an opportunity to utilize this code as written over the last few years. And we've recognized there are some areas that need to be tweaked and maybe refined a little bit more to be more effective and enforceable. And so hopefully that particular code section will be brought forward this year to this board to consider adopting some further changes and refinement. Other things that the advisory board and animal service staff have been having multiple discussions on is the legislative priorities. The most recent conversations that we've been having over the last year is for this next session and some of the priorities that this department has identified as priorities for us to focus on. So I'll provide just an overview of some of those changes and recommendations that we've crafted some language for. So the clarification of citation powers for animal services staff is our first priority to get clarified that we have the option to cite, cite under 574, which is the cruelty statute within NRS. That's something that we want to make a top priority. And then the NRS 574050 through 574200. Again, that's the animal cruelty statute and that's sort of the meat and the potatoes, if you will, of what animal services utilizes for our cruelty statute for neglect and cruelty charges. And so there's a number of things that we wanted to put in there to give it some more enforceability, clarification, as well as add some things that were missing. And so some of the things that I've highlighted that we have suggested is a definition for animal abandonment, a more enforceable definition for shelter that is required for dogs, a clarification that any peace officer or animal control officer may take possession of fighting implements for animals, particularly roosters. And then removing the requirement that forfeiting fighting animals or implements has to wait upon conviction and then it can happen prior to. Continuing with the same statute section, we wanted to expand the number or the, the animals that are covered under the cruelty statute to domestic animals and categories of animals protected by cruelty laws that are for working purposes as well as unowned. Because as it currently is stated, it's for owned animals. We want to make sure that even if we do not know the owner of the animal, that we can still go forward with charges. Adding protections to cruelty laws that prohibits the deprivation of proper ventilation for animals kept indoors, providing veterinary care for injured or sick animals causing unnecessary pain or suffering, providing necessary grooming or shearing that prevents pain and suffering, and then causing an animal to ingest narcotics or alcohol. And then last but not least, we wanted to add some additional protections for tethered dogs so that those animals that do have to live on a tether for part time have some protections in place and are able to get to food and water, are not being tethered in an unsafe manner or with an unsafe collar, and that they're allowed to freely move around and have some, some areas to get away from their own excrement or urine. A special interest project that animal services staff provided to the advisory board was called the Dog Parker. This particular project, we contacted the vendor of this temperature controlled Dog Parker to find out information about it. And we, we presented it to the advisory board. But basically, the Dog Parker is a temperature controlled enclosure that can be placed outside of a business. The client or the customer who wishes to utilize the Dog Parker can pay for the service and go into a store or shop and do their business while their animal is safely monitored in a temperature controlled enclosure outside of the business. We provided all the information that the advisory board had requested and also put together a letter for each of the respective jurisdictions for consideration to implement this into their jurisdiction. To date, we haven't had any of these that have been put into place. However, the information is there if any of the jurisdictions wish to implement this Dog Parker into their, their respective areas. And last but not least, the advisory board has a recommendation for animal services to be able to utilize the power of social media within the work that we do. There is very, very much a benefit to having that opportunity to cast a wider net in our community about timely information, such as lost and found animals, community engagement and transparency, and building that trust in the relationship within our community about who animal services is, what we do, who we, who we are as an organization, who we are as individuals. But just really to help get the word out there and to share some of the free benefits, if you will, of utilizing social media within the day-to-day work that we do. It's extremely powerful. A lot of organizations, many organizations across the animal welfare industry utilize Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Nextdoor. They use all of those tools to help with adoptions and reunifications and sharing of information events. All of those things are extremely powerful and very valuable to a community. And so the, the board had asked for an update about why animal services did not have our own platform for this resource. And so I provided the update on our social media, the county's social media policy. And the recommendation from the board that they wished to share was that this board of county commissioners consider animal services having our own platform to share this information that's extremely valuable to our community. So animal services and the advisory board will continue to work on, with all of our partners and stakeholders to support animal services' mission, which is to promote responsible care of animals through education, proactive outreach and regulation, making Washoe County a safe community. And with that, I will turn it over to Chairwoman Naomi Duer, if she wishes to add anything to that presentation.
Ms. Councilwoman Duer, Chair, are you on, on Zoom?
Hello, Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you now, Mr. Duer. How are you?
Okay, thank you. Wouldn't you know it, our power went out at our house one minute before Cheyenne ended her presentation. So I was able to call in on my phone.
Perfect.
So, thank you. Thank you so much for having us today and inviting Cheyenne to give a presentation on a report that she's worked incredibly hard on over the last year. I just want to say that she and her staff are really top notch. They're extraordinary. They're very engaged. They go the extra mile. I also wanted to thank my colleague, Commissioner Kitty Jung, who is a key member of our animal advisory board. She has many good ideas and together with she and the other members that Ms. Schul identified, we have been able to make a tremendous amount of progress over the last three years. I have been chair since the inception of the board. And during that time, we have tackled many thorny issues. I do want to re-note the phenomenal return and adopt rate that Cheyenne highlighted, over 80%, really a leader in the entire country. I also wanted to mention that during this period of pandemic, Cheyenne and her staff never missed a beat. While we had a decrease in animals running about because more people were home, taking care of their animals, and we also had a decrease in pure number of abused animals, I'll put it. We also had an increase, unfortunately, in those animals that were abused. They were done so more severely. And I just commend Cheyenne and her staff for being able to deal with things that are so difficult to deal with. It's very difficult to go into those situations, whether it's hoarding or hurting any kind of animal or, or the rescue of animals that they get engaged in. They have shared many stories with us besides the ones that you just saw today, where they have been out in the field rescuing animals that were impacted by fire, helping families quarter horses and other livestock type animals during those events. Also power outages, also in, in this pandemic. So I do want to just recap two things that Director Schul mentioned. And those are, we did do a pretty thorough job of reviewing what kind of legislative changes are needed to make animal services even more successful. Director Schul did a great job of identifying those for you. We're really hoping to get those changes. And the reason the changes are so important.
Duer, are you there? We might have lost you for a second. Can you hear us still?
Have the enforcement capability or the, I suppose, process to get the animals re-homed or if needed, to enact punishment on the abusers. So we really want to see those legislative changes. Everything you can do at the county commission to help that, we are right by your side. The other thing that Director Schul mentioned was the social media. And it has been incredibly helpful. And as she mentioned, returning animals, alerting people to missing animals, alerting people to adoptable animals. All I can ask is that you give her all the support that you can. I understand times are tight. But one of the things that you maybe can do is give them perhaps, and we face this at City of Reno, to more freedom to use social media, you know, to put out announcements, to announce events, adoption events and those kind of things. So we're all trying to do more in this era with social media and with internet. And I would just encourage you to do that. And I, and finally, I just want to thank you. You have, I'm going to say again, these are Washoe County employees. They do a tremendous job. They do a tremendous job. We have toured, we have supported, we have reviewed, we have identified, and they can never, never fail to impress us. So with that, Mr. Chair, I hand back the mic to you for any questions of myself or Ms. Schul.
Thank you, Ms. Duer. We do appreciate you serving as the chair on that board in your capacity and as a council member. You have done a phenomenal work there. So, with that, I will look to any of my commissioners in regards to the presentation today. Commissioner Hill, have you signed in?
Thank you, and thank you for the great presentation. I'm really impressed with the work that you're doing at Regional Animal Services. On the legislative priorities, are those bill draft requests that have been done, or I'm just confused about where that is in the process?
Cheyenne Schul, for the record, we have some bill draft request language that our ADA has helped us put into a draft form. However, we're still seeking sponsors for those, and so we're working with the Humane Society of the United States representative as well as the Legislative Liaison with Nevada Humane Society to try to get those moving forward.
Oh, so does Jamie work on this as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, this goes to our legislative team. So this will fall with us and a number of our, but we can go over that.
Okay.
Commissioner Hill?
This is Councilwoman Duer. I just want to mention, normally, it would have probably been submitted under one of our bills, either Washoe County, Reno, or Sparks. I think any one of us could have carried it, but mostly looking to Washoe County. I think the decision from Washoe County was to not do any bills this year. So I think that's why they're looking for an outside sponsor.
On the social media, I think that, you know, I don't know what kind of influence the commission has on that policy, but I would say that it's really important for constituents to know what their tax dollars are going to and to really get that relationship with Reno, Regional Animal Services. So, I think that that is something that I personally would support as a commissioner.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Vice Chair Hartan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Ms. Schul. I just wanted to thank you for the great presentation, and as always, you and your staff are just so ready to assist. I don't think I've ever had to contact you when you guys didn't respond immediately. And so I just, I appreciate how attentive you are, and I also know that you're attentive to both Sparks and Reno regardless of where the calls come in being a regional service. So I, again, I just really appreciate all the hard work, and please extend my debt of gratitude to your staff.
All right. Seeing nothing further from the commissioners, this is an action item this morning. I do want to thank Councilwoman Duer and Cheyenne, Executive Director Schul to join us this morning. Is there any public comment on this item, Madam Clerk?
I have nobody in chambers on Zoom. Looks like there's nobody.
We have nobody on either, so I will bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair.
Looking for a motion.
A motion to accept the report.
I have a motion from the vice chair. I have a second from Commissioner Herman. I will call for the votes, see no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting. Please affirm your votes on the screen. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Manager, we are on to item 10, sir.
Item 10 is a recommendation and possible action to create a commissioner engagement program in the office of the county manager, which will be overseen by the communications director, and which will facilitate and administer a commissioner-citizen engagement process utilizing two tracks, commissioner outreach and the community advisory boards, both work in union for balanced and complete community engagement. Request for possible action to fund the program in FY22 at an estimated program budget of $372,000 to cover personnel, technology, and program costs, a portion of which will be offset with revenues already established in the office of the county manager. And today, we have in chambers Communications Director Lewin Hagan and Tammy Cummings.
Thank you.
Right. And I believe we have Mr. Solaro joining us.
I'm sorry, I forgot about Mr. Solaro, yes.
Yes, that's right. Ms. Lewin Hagan, thank you so much for joining us this morning. We do appreciate you being here, you and Mrs. Cummings, and Mr. Solaro joining us via Zoom. So I will kick it off to you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. For the record, Nancy Lewin Hagan, Communications Director. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Together, Assistant County Manager Dave Solaro and I, and Tammy Cummings are before you today to bring you the framework for our commission support program that we believe will strengthen relationships with your district community and your stakeholders. Since our last update on this program back in August and in support of Strategic Planning Initiative Number Five, a committee collaborated over the past several months to prepare the recommendations that you're going to hear today. The co-chair of that committee, Tammy Cummings, will take you through a very short presentation we have for you. Thank you, Nancy. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. We were very fortunate to have gathered 14 highly engaged employees from six different departments here at Washoe County who collectively have had decades of successful community support experience, serve on the Strategic Planning Committee. Next slide. Thank you. We wanted to create a program to support our commissioners in their efforts to understand and implement smart and effective quality-of-life enhancements and solutions for their districts. The Strategic Planning Committee is recommending a two-track approach in establishing a full-service community engagement platform. Thank you. We clearly understand that each of our commissioners have very unique and diverse needs in each of your districts. There is certainly no size-fits-all solution for outreach. Each of you have different geographic development and service needs, and that's why in the first track, we're recommending a district-focused engagement strategy that includes outreach and communication specifically tailored to each of your districts. In the end, we hope to appreciably strengthen citizen engagement efforts countywide by building a path to nurture future leaders in your communities, earn the public's trust through this process, and create a sustainable program that will serve our residents for years to come. I'm now going to turn it over to Assistant County Manager Dave Solaro, who will touch on Track Two.
Good afternoon. For the record, Dave Solaro, Assistant County Manager. As Tammy mentioned, Track Two is really to help get that neighborhood-level greater focus on development that occurs, as I say, at the neighborhood level. This is something that should remain in the Community Services Department to refocus specifically on what's going on in each district and each specific individual neighborhood as development opportunities present themselves to county staff. This is a re-engagement of local developers to expand the outreach of their programs within the communities that they're going to impact with help to restructure meetings for a more interactive community-developer dialogue rather than what we have today, which is a, you know, just a presentation about what it is the developer would like to do. The important piece here is that this all liaises with the Track One process that Tammy is talking about. So we have various options for each commissioner to specialize, specialize and focus the way they'd like their community engaged with. Turn it back over to Tammy.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave. In the initial implementation stages, we're recommending hiring two key staff, which will be located under the Communications Division. Those staff will facilitate and administer district-specific community engagement plans, as well as help communicate proof of performance to your constituents. We've also created a menu of outreach options that each commissioner can choose from. One of the most important questions we've been trying to solve is how do we, as a county, understand and respond to the needs of the silent majority, providing data-driven strategies for policy decisions and quality of life and other initiatives. We found technology which collects and prioritizes extensive open data to help understand our residents' priorities and needs to make data-smart decisions that resonate best within our communities. Track One also provides a list of potential action items and roles for our commissioners. Thank you. The commissioner's menu would include four types of engagement support. Opportunities through social media include live events and district-level community webpages, leveraging new and existing technology resources, including Technology Services' GIS hub, which would allow key community-district groups to interact with our commissioners and staff, community connections such as live or virtual fireside chats, or district-specific outreach for hot topics in emerging crises. And lastly, development of district-specific volunteer and intern programs to support our commissioners' efforts. I'm now going to turn it over to Nancy, who will share more information on program costs. Thanks, Tammy. For the record, Nancy Lewin Hagan, Communications Director. The program will require new funding for FY22 in the amount of $372,000. That would include two staff members and technology to support and enhance what we are currently doing to gather data. And much like when we launched Washoe 311, we will plan and continue to go the program as we implement plans and get a feel from each of you and the staff members as to what works in your specific districts. And as we can see, Washoe 311, as it rolled out five years ago, is very, very different than what it is today and what it's grown into. We see the exact same thing happening here. So our next steps, if approved, would be to work with Human Resources to establish job classifications and recruit for July 1 start dates to launch our commission support program through the Communications Division. And with that, I will wrap it up and ask any questions that you would like of myself, Dave Solaro, or Tammy Cummings.
Thank you, Ms. Lewin Hagan. I do appreciate you coming, and thank you for the brief and very informative presentation this morning. I do appreciate that. Are there any questions by the commissioners in regards to this? Not yet, okay. Lot of innovative, a lot of innovative stuff. I do have Commissioner Herman sign in. Commissioner Herman?
I've heard everything. I mean, I've heard everything they've said and everything. Just a kind of a statement. The reason I'm a commissioner is because of cabs, because they took it away, and we needed it desperately at the time because we were in the process of doing some zoning changes and other things. So that's one of the main reasons I ran for office. So you wouldn't have to put up with me if it wasn't for this cab problem. So, I'm not sure I understand this whole program yet. The two questions that probably would answer it for some of the citizens involved, are we going to have monthly meetings? Are we going to have, call it the Citizen Advisory Board, and just how it's going to be set up? Is it going to be very different, or is it going to be like it's been for 45 years? So those are kind of the basics, getting started with that. So I just need to understand more about...
For the record, Nancy Lewin Hagan, Communications Director. I am going to invite Dave Solaro to join this conversation. I think first and foremost, what's important is that we work with CSD to help communicate and make that bridge on the cabs. From what I understand, we would keep the cabs, particularly yours, for example, your five cabs would stay intact, and this program with the two tiers would supplement and continue to build that bridge with your cabs and other opportunities that we would have for you in District Five. And Dave, I would invite you to talk about some of the conversations we're having with CSD about the current cab program.
Sure. Thanks, Nancy. Again, for the record, Dave Solaro, Assistant County Manager. Through the chair to the commissioner, I think the nice part about this program, that, again, those 14 county employees have kind of put their heads together to bring forward to you, is this gives each commissioner in each of the different districts a menu of options to choose from on how you best want to work with your community. So in your instance, you know, if you would like to keep those five cabs, the discussion around what occurs at those meetings, are they monthly meetings, that is really driven by the commissioner and the district through this process. I think one of the things that we have been unsuccessful with in the past is the ability to finance the different needs of each of the commissioners as it comes to the cab program, and that's why you saw the cab program in the past focus on development, because that was one thing that the entire board could focus the resources towards. I think we've got an opportunity here after meeting with each commissioner to really understand how you want to communicate and get out into your districts to make sure that Washoe County is providing the leadership that you would like. So this really is up to the commissioners and how you want to focus, how you want to use the menu of options in either Track One coupled with Track Two. We can call it whatever we'd like. I mean, that's really the direction of the board, but what we're trying to solidify here is that this is something important enough for you all to ask the manager to go ahead and find a way to fund this program so that we can do great things for our community and gather the input that we need to make good decisions and provide the information that our community's been looking for. So I hope that answers your question.
It just seems a little bit more complicated than the way it was before, and it seems like we're going to be spending more money than what we were before. Is that true?
Well...
No?
Nancy Lewin Hagan, for the record, we, our current support to you commissioners, certainly, we support here. We support your decisions. We, but district-specific and jurisdictional, along with combining technology, has definitely been lacking. Your commissioner newsletter, for example, for bandwidth and time and purposes, we don't have the ability to listen to each of your districts and combine specific jurisdictional messaging. We'd like to begin to do that. We look at this, and the recommendations certainly from the Strategic Planning Committee, as taking a more holistic approach, but understanding that we have five entirely different districts, and in that, supporting you, which right now, we don't do.
Commissioner Hartan, Vice Chair Hartan, I have you sign in. Next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Solaro, are we going to bring back policies, rules and regulations for the commission to vote on with this change?
So through the process of budgeting, you know, part of the policy is set with the budget itself, but certainly as it relates directly to the Citizen Advisory Boards, yes, we need to bring, we need to bring things back to the board for discussion and execution related to policies around exactly how those, whether they're called Citizen Advisory Boards, if that's what we're going to do. Remember, part of the concern, and even brought up with the concern of this staff working group, was that the Citizens Advisory Boards are somewhat limiting in kind of process just based on open meeting law and what that looks like. So certainly, we have to spell all of that out in a set of bylaws that this board will have to weigh in on.
Okay. Yeah, and there's a couple of other policies I'd certainly like to bring back. One specifically is, I don't think we should be able to appoint family members or people who are residing in our house. I think that that's an important policy that we institute and put into place and ensure fairness and equality on the boards. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What I see with this program and the benefits of this program is I represent Incline Village, and they have many jurisdictions, cross-jurisdictional coverage. So I also sit on the TTD Board, I sit on the TRPA Board, and then there's IFGID updates, and the community has told me they really do feel out of the loop from what Washoe County is doing and what is happening in their community. And what I see is that there's a potential to continue with the cab. The cab is really important because the community needs to see this development and weigh in on that. And so I find the two cab meetings that I've been present at are really important for the community to give that input, and then for the commission to know what the community feels about these different projects and the different boards that they go to. And then I see it also enhancing and letting people know what's going on in the community and interacting with the community on a larger scale, which I think has been missing. So allowing for commissioners to interact with the community in a nonpartisan way, and so I'm excited about that potential, and that's what I see with the program. And so I'm excited about that potential, and that's what I see with the program. And I just want to make sure that if I'm wrong, I can be corrected. But I think that there's some real benefits to expanding community engagement, and that's something that I ran on, is that I think that the county can do a better job of talking to the community and ensuring that the community feels part of the decision-making and that the decisions aren't being put on them.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Commissioner Herman, I have you signed in again.
I wanted to make a comment, to kind of clear the air on a subject that's come up here about three or four times in the past few months. And it was about, Mr. Hartung had stated about something that he'd like to clarify that relatives and this sort of thing wouldn't be on boards. The only reason that anybody was on a board that maybe I think shouldn't be either was because there was a shortage of members, and it was a kind of an emergency that we fill the seats when they first, we first got back to have meetings. And so against kicking and screaming, this person agreed to come on board as a member until the time came that we could fill that seat, which has happened. So I just wanted to clear the air on that.
And I'm sure we'll bring that back when we have further policy discussion, you know, I don't want to get too.
That's just a one-time thing.
Gotcha.
You know.
I don't want to get too far off track, and I'm sure we can have that in detail. You know, and I want to provide a little bit of commentary here, a little bit of historical value from my standpoint. When I first got on, became a commissioner, I did not come from Commissioner Herman's path. I was not a member of a Citizens Advisory Board or the Planning Commission. I was merely a private citizen and a business owner who was involved in government from a different aspect. And I preached many a times after attending Cabs that the efficacy wasn't there, that we were putting our time and money into Cabs and their voices weren't getting heard in a timely manner, at least from the standpoint of the South Valleys, Trucky Meadows, the South Valleys and WASHO Valley Cab. We weren't getting that information, back to the Planning Commission, back to the commissioners in a timely manner. And it became a forum for the public to participate, yet their concerns were never being validated through the deciding members. And so it became, in my opinion, from an outsider looking in, ineffective. So we approached this from a number of different facets. We took a lot of the power away from Cabs in regards to just making a development, which I thought at the time, and I will sit here and tell you, I thought at the time was a smart idea. After watching it in fruition, it did not. It was not, it did not prove to be fruitful in that change. And so we've gone back through many iterations of what our Cabs looked like. And I would agree with Commissioner Herman in the sense that this is a lot of where our initial citizen involvement begins, participation, understanding, and different things of that nature. But to Commissioner Hill's part and statement, is that our geographically, we're very different. Every district, one through five, are very different in the type of community we serve, the residents, the type of issues that are important to them. Commissioner Jung's district is very different than mine in regards to the issues that are out there. And so I think that this is not destroying the Cabs, it's giving the Cabs still the autonomy to be exactly who they need to be and continue to serve their citizens of their district exactly the way they should and continue to do so. But also just add that supplemental, as Ms. Lewin-Hagan pointed out, that supplemental piece of information, allowing that outreach. Because a lot of the times, the outreach, the reason we don't have the reciprocation from the constituents is that they don't understand that that information's being talked about, or those issues are being talked about. And so we want to make sure that that outreach is there, and I think this is the portion of our Citizen Advisory Boards that's been lacking. And to the vice chair's point, I think when we come back and have this in a more in-depth discussion, that we provide a little bit more structure about, you know, policy, about what the Cabs are and the desired outcome from this board for those Cabs. Yet, but allowing still that immediate and most dire need for all commissioners is the informed decision, the ability to make an informed decision from the information that it's so important to, which is the citizens and the constituents. So as long as we can blend that, I think this program does that as anything. This is a new program. It's not something we've done before, and I think there are going to be many iterations of what the final outlook was. I mean, 311 started one way and has become something very different, but now a very, very useful tool. And so I'm excited about it. I think it's something worth putting time and effort into, because every citizen that I've talked to in my district has shared with me that communication is challenging at best, and that they have a very difficult time communicating with their commissioner. This is one way for them to do that and try to do that a little bit more frequently. So those are my opinions, and I look forward to this program. I'm supportive of it. I think it's going to be a great new addition. So with that, I'll see my time. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, and I'm looking forward to see how this is going to morph. I started on a cab. I started serving on the cab in the very early 90s. And at that time, it was the first stop in the developmental program. Now, we had a, we had a, you know, one map system, which meant that everything essentially was a master plan amendment. So the cab was, or potentially a master plan amendment. So the cab was this great place where developers could come, and they had two shots at it. And if they could appease the cab, typically, the Planning Commission would look at the Cabs' recommendations, and then it sort of made it much easier because it was really this sort of homegrown process. It morphed into being more of a community meeting with respect to having the sheriff and, you know, fire and others kind of attend, which was a good thing, but it wasn't how the Cabs were initially instituted and set up. And one of the really important things that, and Nancy, I'm happy to share with you or your staff some of the training stuff that we used to get back in the 90s, because I actually still have my books. There was an extensive training program for cab members. I mean, it was a very, very deep program, very thorough, and it was headed up John Slaughter was, he oversaw that as part of the, you know, Community Development Department. Leslie Roy Lance was directly involved in it, and Bob Webb was the trainer. And so that training component of it is, I think, essential, because even my cab members today aren't savvy with all of the things that we were not made to know, but taught, and even in meeting management, how to go through the process of properly managing a meeting. So I think a big component of this, at least for me, is how do we train our community members to engage in this process where it's fair, it's equitable, everybody gets an opportunity to speak, they understand the open meeting law, and are trained properly? And I think that that's a real challenge. And then separating that from the community portion of it, where the sheriff or other members of other agencies, RTC used to come out and give us updates periodically, the Flood Management Authority would come out and give us updates periodically. And so you kind of saw all of this other stuff, not just developmental requests. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Jung, do you have any comments you'd like to add to this conversation, ma'am?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you, and thank the staff for taking on a new way of looking at how to provide commissioners with a toolbox in which they can select based on their knowledge of the issues and their constituents. And I see this as more opportunity for commissioners to personalize their approach with what I think is a new twist to all of this, and I think it is to be credited to Mr. Brown and staff, is that one size fits all won't work with our constituents, and that constituents who believe that they are getting a great deal of insight and information from their Citizen Advisory Board or a town hall, or any other iteration of that, is just providing commissioners really with more options to engage their constituents, where their constituents are. So I think this is really creative, and most importantly, it's so equitable, because each of us, as we mentioned, have our own different strengths and ways that we enjoy interacting. So I support this, and I want to thank the chairman, who has really listened to what the commissioners have been saying through these past years, past lean years, I might say, that the investment needs to be made into this community outreach and engagement, and finding the funding for it, and professionalizing it in a certain way, but also keeping it organic to what each commissioner would like to hear. So I support this. I think it's really innovative, and I think that it'll help us as well to predict emerging issues rather than reactive issues that we are then reacting to. So I think it's a great idea. I think it's great that the caveat was also laid down, that a lot of times we start out with these ideas, and then they evolve based on the input and feedback and whether things work or not. So I'm fully on board, and I want to thank Mr. Brown, the chairman, the communications director, and the focus team that spent all these months as staff who are experts in engagement to give us some ideas. And really, what I feel is that we've been heard, so I appreciate that more than anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. All right. Seeing no further comments from the commissioners, I'm going to open public comment. Madam Clerk, will you please call public comment at this time?
I will.
Thank you, ladies.
First, in chambers, we have Ms. Carol Burns.
Welcome, Ms. Burns. Come on up.
My name is Carol Bird. I'm currently a member of the Sun Valley Citizens Advisory Board. I'm disappointed that more of our people aren't here today, but I'm going to talk for all of us. As I've mentioned before to you folks, that I was on the original board back years ago, with Steve Brown was our county commissioner, and he helped us in Sun Valley, getting in and out of there, because Clearacre was a single road, or two-lane road at that time, and he helped us get it into a four-lane so that we could get in and out of our valley. The board started out as people coming to the county commissioner with problems that we heard of, or that people had contacted us about. Now, they were simple things, not big, major projects, as we ended up just doing developments, but minor problems in our different districts. So you all in a different district have different problems, and you go to your Citizens Advisory Board meetings to hear what those problems are and to see if you can offer any help. The board was able to help a lot of people, a lot of places, I won't go into that, but then you narrowed this down to just development. The only thing we could talk about was development. We stopped one in Sun Valley where they're going to cram in nine homes in an acre, we're going to down to three or four for at least 10 years before they're going to be back again. But there are other problems besides development, and people cannot come here. I used to work. I never knew we could come here. Do you see anybody here today? Whether they're sick or not, they can't come. They have work, just like you do. So they came to us. They told us, the first meeting I ever had was with Marjatwell, myself, Ben Lancaster, Ben Evans, and Steve Brown. We met at the GID, and Bill Bickham was there then. Anyway, you need to keep it open. You need the people to be able, then I went on television, and we had 70 people come to our very last meeting. You have a problem with communications. You need to let the community know when these meetings are. You could have a community service, you could put it on television, they'll be there. Then you'll know what's going on. But if you don't communicate, they won't know either.
Thank you, Ms. Burns.
Mr. Patrick Shea.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. We appreciate it. Mr. Patrick Shea.
Good afternoon. Patrick Shea, I'm the chair of the North Valley Citizens Advisory Board under Commissioner Herman's appointment. I came today because I'm kind of surprised that this is going on. I got a note in December, maybe something was happening, but to this point, I've never been contacted by this development committee. Excuse me for the, may I remove my mask to speak?
If you need to, sir. You can, yes.
Ah, thank you. That's much better, a little asthma problem.
That's okay.
But we have not, while they have talked to many divisions of the county, they have yet to talk to the chairs or even any members of the Cabs. So myself, I have not been contacted to find out what the Cabs need. And to that end, we believe we're not part of the process. And that seems to be the whole feeling in the Cabs. I've been on the Reno City Cab, or Neighborhood Advisory Board, and I've been on this one for now, for four years, I guess. The feeling is that the community talks to us, but it doesn't go any further. We have no authority, once the information gets in my hands, I can call Commissioner Herman, but I don't feel that I could call, say, Commissioner Hartung, or Lucy, or Hill, with the problem that we have. How do I get it forward to you folks? It just goes into the recorded record, and I have no idea that you ever heard about it, until we end up with a Swan Lake. And that's when our Cabs started getting information to the Board of Commissioners. It went around us, because that's all we could tell our neighbors, go to the council meeting and present yourself there. That's how Swan Lake ended up on your table, because we couldn't do anything with it. So I'd like to make that point, that we need to put a little power, yet control, in the Cabs. Some methodology for two-way communication, it would be my recommendation. I appreciate that you're increasing and enhancing. I'd love to see it. I've been advocating for such a thing for six years now on both the city and the Reno, or the county commission. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here, and go on with the rest of your day.
Appreciate it, Mr. Shea. Thank you.
Next up on Zoom, we have Ms. Judith Miller.
Ms. Miller, can you hear us? Ms. Miller, you got us, can you hear us in the chambers? Is your mic muted, Ms. Miller?
We are now, I believe so.
Now we got you, Ms. Miller. You have the forward.
All right. Thank you, commissioners. My name's Judy Miller, and I am the chair of the Incline Village, Crystal Bay Citizens Advisory Board. I've been on the, serving on that board since 2014. It was, I think, about that time where the cab was now limited just to development applications, not the full spectrum of community concerns that I had known when I first moved here. But I stayed with the program, hoping that ultimately, the budget will allow the cab to resume operating like it had in years past, like you experienced, Commissioner Hartung. But unfortunately, attendance dropped dramatically. Unless there is a community-wide impact, like the short-term rentals or the mobility hub that's proposed, or if you live next door to a project, most citizens have no interest in hearing about development applications. Our paper went away about that time, and the county wasn't publishing meetings on social media. I'm confident if the meetings dealt with other topics and efforts were made to inform the public, the attendance level would likely return to its previous significant and worthwhile levels. It really was the county connection with this community as it existed before 2014. I hope it could return to that. You remember how the fire and the sheriff would come to the meetings? This was the common gathering place where people could learn about. This was, this was the common gathering place where people could learn about the county. Now they hardly know who does the plowing, who collects the garbage. We don't even know who does what because there isn't that single point of contact with the county. The other track sounds like it'll take over some of the tasks that I and other members have done on our own, like publishing meeting announcements and newsletters on social media and live or Zoom forums facilitated. And I must mention my gratitude to County Library's John Crockett. So I hope Mr. Scott is listening. But I, you know, I really feel like larger issues do need to be brought to this community, if not in the cab, maybe in a workshop setting. But make sure the public has adequate opportunity to ask questions and get answers that others will see and hear. Too often, I've been to public meetings where the communication is only one direction. I hope you'll continue county meetings on Zoom, even after we no longer need COVID-19 restrictions. Thanks for giving me this opportunity to serve my community. But unless the cab agendas consider the full range of topics of our community's concerns related to the county, I think perhaps maybe the money needs to be directed elsewhere. It's, you know, it would be unfortunate. I'm hoping you will find a way to make each district serve the needs of that district and make sure the communication is transparent.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. We do appreciate it.
Next up, we have Pamela Roberts over Zoom.
Mr. Chair, my name is Pam Roberts. I reside in the Warm Springs area. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Ms. Roberts.
I have expressed concerns to this board previously about the citizens advisory board and the need for the Cabs to be able to discuss more items. So I thoroughly agree with the comments of Judith Miller and I think it was Thomas Shea regarding Cabs and how it would be helpful to have more topics that they could discuss. I also would like to echo Commissioner Hartung's comment about training for cab members regarding open meeting law and other things. I'm also sure Commissioner John's enthusiasm for Track One, which I think does seek to improve the outreach and communication between the commissioners and the constituents. But I'm still very concerned about whether regular constituents like myself and other residents are going to have the same kind of access to information and planning that local developers and their consultants have in terms of their access to county planners and other employees and not just the commissioners. I'm also concerned that when we have a citizen advisory board, that that information, that is district-related in terms of our own community. But the reality is, is that once it goes to the planning commission and then to this body, the Board of County Commissioners, all five commissioners are going to weigh in and make a decision about a development, not just the district, not just the commissioner for our district. And so it's not only important for us to be able to develop this communication and outreach between ourselves and our own commissioner, but since the entire board makes these decisions, I think there also has to be a way to accomplish that. And then I do need to address briefly Commissioner Herman's comment about the appointment of an individual that was in her household. I don't believe that was accurate in terms of the timing of that. And I believe there were other, other people who were eligible to be appointed to the cab that were not appointed to the cab. And when, if, it appears to me from the brief description on the agenda that there might be a different name, whether it's Community Advisory Board instead of Citizen Advisory Board, and whether or not that's going to be, have a different process, whether you're going to amend the Wash County Code accordingly. But I think there needs to be some improvement in the policies in terms of who gets appointed to those Cabs if they are going to be that point of contact. And I thank you for your time. I think you, I think you guys are on the right track. I'm just very concerned that the Cabs, or not, instead of being enhanced, it might end up actually becoming less effective and neutered, and I don't want that to happen.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Roberts. I appreciate that.
Next up, we have Maeve Ambrose over Zoom.
Hello. Thank you for listening to me today. I'm the chair of the Warm Springs Rural Cab. And I wanted to thank you, Mr. Brown, Mr. Solaro, and the county agencies who contributed to the community engagement roadmap. And I especially wanted to thank you all, the current commissioners, as well as former Commissioner Burke Bigbler, for listening to your constituents' concerns regarding the old cab format and for allowing the matter to be discussed in this public forum. It's important to include the opportunity, however, for residents in the individual districts to be able to discuss items of concern that may not be development-oriented. So please, in the new process, allow the Cabs to be more able to have more control over their agendas. And it appears that the new proposals now are just a framework. So hopefully, the public will have more input as the new program evolves. And I appreciate, Sheriff Lucy, you recommending that that happen. And I also agree with Commissioner Hartung that a training program for cab members would be good. It's, actually, would be outstanding. And I think, also, I wanted to thank Ms. Burns, Miss Shea, Ms. Miller, other cab chairs who did attend in person. I wish I could have come in, in person, but I was unable to today. And I also do also share concerns that sometimes with the cab member selections, there may be other applicants that could be considered. And I personally witnessed where this hasn't happened. And I would hope that moving forward, when there is a large number of applications to be reviewed, that perhaps others than just the commissioner in that district can have a look at those applications to see if, and determine if there are any applicants that would be beneficial to be on the board. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ambrose. We do appreciate it.
I show nobody else signed in on Zoom.
All right. Seeing no further public comment, we'll bring it back to the board for final discussion on this. Commissioners, any final comments based upon public comment or anything? You know, I want to just kind of submit this so we can kind of move this along. This is, as we pointed out, there have been some great comments, and I want to thank all the public commentators that did submit that, their discussion today. We are looking to improve the process, improve the process, but also retain the qualities that were effective in years past. And so this is a supplemental program to assist with the commissioners' outreach and the community's outreach back and forth, so there is two-way communication. And so we look forward to seeing that in the upcoming fiscal year 2022 with the new budget. So with that, Commissioner Herman, I do have you signed in now as well. Commissioner Herman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to remind, I think probably Commissioner Hartung would remember Liberelli, our attorney for the board, previous board. He was so good at explaining the open law, open meeting law and all that sort of thing. And he would always come to the introductions and the classes that were held at that time. And the education that was provided to us at that time was actually very, very good. And in fact, I wish I could find the video of that, that, one of those meetings because it, he was recorded and it was really impressive. He did a fine job. And since I was not able to be present to work with you before, I would really like to make sure we get together and spend some time because I do have some definite ideas about my, my area. Especially since I'd like to save us some money. And if I can, and I have some ideas about that for my particular area, since we're five boards. And my people are pretty industrious and they can do a lot of things that would, you know, lower the amount of work that's done here at the county. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Vice Chair Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And perhaps one of the ways that we can look at how Cabs might be dealt with in a different way. I mean, I have no issue with, with certain agencies showing up, but it... The problem is, is, and the way that it was explained to me, is that it, because the conversation can get to be so open that you end up violating the open meeting law. So perhaps what we do is we, we schedule our Cabs in such a way that we're, we, we have developmental issues in a certain section, and then basically the cab adjourns. And, and then it's just more of a, a, a community meeting that maybe the chair of the cab can hold, where no deliberation would occur between the cab and any other agencies or the community on, on items that might not be on the agenda.
There's, there's a ton of ways to look at that. I agree with you, Vice Chairman. And I think there's a number of ways we can slice that. And I know, Mr. Solaro, and I'm getting nods from Ms. Lewinhagen in the, in the audience, that when we bring these items back to the commission for that ground or policy discussion about really what the cab's role is specific to different types of issues within the community, we can have that broader discussion. And I hope, I hope we do get that interaction and that input from the cab chairs and, and members to what they'd like to see on those Cabs and how it pertains to theirs specifically, because each cab, like we, we pointed out, is different. So we'll do that. We'll definitely bring that back for, for a more robust discussion. This, though, I mean, I really want to kind of, kind of rein us back in here in the sense that this is that for the program, for the commissioner outreach and community advisory board's outreach program. So at this time, oh, Commissioner Hill, I have you signed in now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was prepared to make a motion.
Okay. Commissioner Hill.
Okay. I move to accept the recommendations before us today with a caveat that staff brings back the bylaws on the Cabs and policies. So we can really do a deep dive, dig into those, and make recommendations for how the cab will function in the new fiscal year.
Okay, so just to, just to, okay, and I have a motion, a second from Commissioner Herman for, just for some clarification. So your motion, Commissioner Hill, is to move to and create the Commissioner Engagement Program through the Office of County Manager with the caveat of bringing back a little bit more further policy in regards to the Cabs. Okay. Commissioner Herman, you agree with that second?
Okay.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. I have a motion from Commissioner Hill, a second from Commissioner Herman.
Mr. Chair, Nate Edwards, real quick.
Yes, Assistant Deputy District Attorney.
Yes. Just further clarification on the caveat about the Cabs. As I understand the motion, it is to create the CEP, the Commissioner Engagement Program, as stated in the agenda item. I just want to make sure that the motion is not taking any positions on revamping or overhauling the Cabs. That's, that's not what the item is. So I want to make sure that, I mean, as I understand that, that's kind of a, a comment for staff to, to bring something back on in the future. But the motion should be just limited to the item, which is the Commissioner Engagement Program.
Okay. All right.
I can, do you want me to do it again?
Why don't we do that? Do you want to rescind, you want to rescind your first motion?
I'll rescind my first motion. So I would like to make a motion to create the Commissioner Engagement Program in the office of the county manager, which will be overseen by the communications director, which will facilitate and administer a commission, commissioner and citizen engagement processing, process utilizing two tracks, commissioner outreach and the Cabs, both working in unison for balance and complete community engagement, and to fund the program in fiscal year 22 with a budget of $372,000 to cover personnel, technology, and program costs.
Okay. I have a motion now from Commissioner Hill. I have a second from Commissioner, Vice Chair Hartung. Any further discussion now on that motion? Seeing no further discussion on that motion, I will close that. We will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Please affirm your votes on the screen. All commissioners are voting in the affirmative. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Cummings, Mr. Solaro, and Ms. Lewinhagen. Mr. Manager, we are on to item 11, sir.
Item 11 is a discussion and direction to staff and possible action concerning a vacancy on the Reno Justice Court created by the retirement of the Honorable Peter J. Sfrazza. Possible options include directing staff to return the suggestions and cost estimates on a process to appoint an individual to serve until the June, until the 2022 election, an election procedure to fill the vacancy for the remainder of the unexpired term, or to leave the seat open until a new justice of the peace is elected in 2022 and seated in 2023. And I believe Assistant County Manager Kate Thomas is available to address this.
All right. Mrs. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Chair, for the record, Kate Thomas, Assistant County Manager. And before you today, under item 11, is staff seeking direction on a vacancy, as mentioned, of one of the justices of the peace. So we received a letter in November from Chief Judge Sullivan, who notified the board that Justice Sfrazza's last day was going to be the end of October. There would then be a vacancy in Department Two of the court. And in that letter, Chief Judge Sullivan offered to hold that Department Two seat vacant until a new judge is elected as a result of the 2022 election. And so what staff has done is prepare for you today three options for the board to consider, since that takes a vote of the board. The first being that there would be, staff would bring back a resolution to fill the vacancy by conducting an election. We had put in the staff report for your information, given where we are currently in the status of COVID, that it would be an all male, M-A-I-L, election. And the cost of that, based on conference with the registrar, would be about 400, a little over $400,000. The second option for you to consider would be to have staff come forward at a subsequent meeting and set forth a recommended process to appoint an individual to fill the vacant term of the Department Two seat. You'll recall the board had gone through that process, filling an assembly seat not that long ago. So there's some familiarity there. The savings based on the existing vacancy, staff has worked with budget and the justice court staff to figure out it's about $19,000 savings per month that that seat is held vacant. And then finally, for you to consider is leaving the position open until that position is then elected and seated on January 3rd of 2023, following the 2022 election. We have calculated the savings based on that, again, back to that $19,000 a month, to be about $494,000 in savings. And so what staff is seeking is the board to give direction so that we can proceed according to your recommendation. And it should be noted that several of you on the board recall that there was a similar instance back in 2014 and 2015 with the retirement of a judge and the board elected to hold that seat, ultimately elected to hold that seat vacant for some savings as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. I do appreciate that, that understanding for this item. I'm going to go right to the commission, Commissioner, Vice Chair Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is, to me, this is a no-brainer. Recall back December, in 2014, when Judge Schrader retired, we left that seat open for good reason because the savings in that particular case was over a million dollars. And, and the, the way we got to the point where we could make a decision was the court itself, if you remember, Chief Judge Pearson himself came before us and talked about caseload and that the caseload was easy to absorb. And, and they were more than willing to absorb that load and, and pass those savings on to the system. I think we've got a similar situation here. And Chief Judge Ryan Sullivan has requested that the position not be filled until the regular election scheduled for 2022, with the vacancy to be filled on January 3rd, 2023, which would result in an annual savings of approximately $228,000. which would result in an annual savings of approximately $228,000 and a total savings of $500,000, which is in the staff report on page three of five. I see option three, leave the position open until the position seat is, to the position is seated in January 2023 with the, that following recommendation. I think that that's a, that's a wise move for us, and, and the court has agreed, and I, I think that we should follow their recommendations. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner, Vice Chairman Hartung. Commissioner Herman. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If that was a motion, I would second it. So that's all I'm going to say. I agree.
Yeah, let me, I wanted, okay. I wanted to share, I just wanted to share, and, and I did meet with Chief, Chief Judge Ryan Sullivan in regards to this. Every, all members on this Commission, aside from Commissioner Hill, were here during that 2015 decision to keep that open, which was a wise decision then. They, she did affirm to me that she felt confident that the current load that's on the Reno Justice Court will be maintained and can be maintained adequately with the current judges that are sitting on the bench as is, that there is no need for this. So I would, I would also confirm that this is a smart and wise decision for us to allow the judges to conduct their business as they see best fit for their, for their courts and also creating a savings for them and the county as a whole. So that would be my, I would, I would make it in a form of a motion that we, we continue to leave the position open until the position is seated in January 2023, following the 2022 election with the estimated savings for the salary and benefits for the 26 months. And that would be my motion.
And now, okay.
Okay. We got to rush to the, we got to rush to the speaking here. All right. So I have a motion and a second by the Vice Chair. Do you, any further discussion? Seeing none, call for the, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comments.
Thank you. Seeing no public comment, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Commissioner Jung, I didn't hear your vote.
Yeah, Commissioner Jung.
Sorry, that was an aye.
That was an aye. We got an affirmation that was an aye, so all the Commissioners voting. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We are on to our final item of the day. Mr. Manager, item 12.
Item 12 is a discussion and direction to staff regarding legislation or legislative issues proposed by legislators by Washoe, by Washoe County Truckee Metals Fire Protection District or by other entities permitted by the Nevada State Legislature to submit bill draft requests or such legislative issues as may be deemed by the Chair or the Boards, or the Board to be of critical significance to Washoe County. And Mr. Chair, there really isn't any change to what we reviewed last week with regards to the list of bills or, or potential bills that would, in terms of what we're supporting or what we are watching.
Correct. Commissioner Hill and I have been sitting on those, those meetings and paying attention to that. There hasn't been any substantial change to anything yet. As we've said, we've just kind of got to wait and see this out. I did want to make a quick report that myself, Assistant County Manager Kate Thomas, and our Legislative Affairs Director, Jamie Rodriguez, did make a presentation on Thursday to the Assembly Government Affairs Board, as we do every year, presenting to them information in regards to the county's process and all of the things that we do here at the county and what makes the counties then so important. We did fall right behind the Nevada Association of Counties in their presentation. Very much a well-received presentation in regards to our COVID response, what we've been doing in regards to homeless within our region, our budget and how we have been effectively working together with our municipalities and regions to address a number of issues. So we had a great response from them. Hopefully, we will be able to do that in front of the Senate Government Affairs in the future. So other than that, no changes, as the managers pointed out, and that is a brief update from what has been going on in the legislative session. Any, any questions or discussion from any of the Commissioners as it pertains to legislative or what they'd like to see going forward? Seeing none, is there any public comment?
There's no public comment.
Seeing no public comment, we'll close that. Just, there was really no need for action on this, but we could take a motion to accept the report that was been provided.
So moved.
I have a motion from Vice Chair. Do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Hill. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously with all Commissioners voting. All right. And we are on to item 13. Mr. Manager, is our final public comment.
Item 13, public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Commission agenda. The Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the Commission as a whole.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call public comment for me?
We have Ann Marie Grant on Zoom.
Ann Marie Grant for the record, sister of Thomas Purdy murdered by Reno police officers Christopher Good, David Tallman, Officer Robert Maxwell, and Jorge Apuricio. He was then asphyxiated to death while hogtied still by Washoe County Sheriffs Brendan Glenn, Andre Silva, Timothy Sanger. Under the direction of Sergeant Wayne Westerlin, Jean Herman brought up earlier in the meeting that she wants the emails read onto the record. Perhaps I'll have to refresh her memory that a certain Commissioner during a meeting about eight weeks ago, Bob Lucy, made a sudden change in policy, which in my opinion was just an attempt to stifle myself and my brother Daniel Purdy's freedom of speech and attempt, and it was an attempt to make it more difficult for us to participate as we previously were leaving voicemails rather than calling in Zoom live. But I guess unfortunately, you didn't realize, you think you would after, how long have I been calling, three, four years, that I actually watch every single meeting live? So I'll continue to participate via Zoom. And I will then end my comment with my brother Thomas being killed at the jail. And I hope you don't consider me a nuisance because that would be absolutely absurd. You should understand exactly why I call every week. Because if it was your son, daughter, brother, cousin, loved one that was in the position my brother was tortured for 40-plus minutes, you would be pissed off too. He sounds like someone who is really putting the deputies in danger. Have a good day.
I have nobody else signed in, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. Seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. We are on to item 14. Mr. Manager.
Commission, Commissioners, County Managers' comments, reports, and updates to include Boards and Commission updates, requests for information or topics for future agendas. Mr. Chair, I have nothing further.
All right. Anything, any of the Commissioners? Do you have, Commissioner Hill?
Yes. I just want to do this in the appropriate place on the agenda and bring up the, asking staff to bring back CAB policies, bylaws for the Commission to discuss. Thank you.
All right. Anything, Commissioner, Vice Chair Hartung?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, and this is, this is for some future time. If we can ever get the regional homeless team assembled, where we have members from the City of Sparks, City of Reno, and Washoe County that are dealing with homeless issues on a, on a regional level, and, and we have social workers in that group, and then we have interns from UNR and et cetera, kind of the, the vision of that team as a, as a regional team, it would be good to think about where we might be able to place a substation for them so that they have someplace that they can just sort of have an office because they're, because they'll be from three individual agencies and, and HSA and et cetera. It's been suggested that maybe we could have like a modular on the, on the, the campus or something of that nature, but maybe there's another place that we can have it. Maybe it's downtown. I, I don't know what the answer is, but it's just something I'd like to have a conversation with when we get a little closer and, and certainly those of you who serve on the SEHAB can, can kind of take that, that thought process farther. So I, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Herman, do you have anything final? Okay. Commissioner Jung, do you have anything final today?
I do, Mr. Chairman. In addition to the question about CAB policies, I would like the manager, or to bring it to the board if you want to direct this, but I, an idea for another nepotism issue, and that is elected officials having their family members working in the county and the, the potential conflict that that puts staff in, as well as cooling off period for when people leave office and, and what the procedures are for that. I think that'd be good for all of us to be refreshed on and to maybe be thinking or not if we'd like to change those policies. So I'd like to look at that as well, a more broader approach, not just on Cabs and, and other Boards and Commissions, but actually employment. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Yeah, we'll definitely bring that back. And I think that's, I think all these comments that have been brought up today in regards to a number of these issues that we've, we've talked about are prudent. So I think, I think it's a broad base, Mr. Manager, kind of a broader base discussion that we bring back, looking at it as a county as a whole, so we can avoid some of these challenges and whatnot in the future. So we will do that. We will bring that back for a more broad-based discussion, and hopefully the Manager can bring us some information on that. All right. Seeing nothing further, everybody else, going once, twice, three, we adjourn. Thank you very much. Sorry for the delayed meeting today.